Call to order this meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors for a regular meeting. Mr. Powell, good evening.
Good evening.
Would you please call the roll?
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Ms. Reisner.
Here. Next on our agenda is presentations.
No presentations.
Consent calendar, minutes adoption, and appropriation for road maintenance, $8,720. We need a motion to approve the appropriation.
You can just do the consent calendar with one motion.
Okay.
With the adoption of the consent calendar?
Mr. Powell?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Reisner?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Here. Next on our agenda is presentations.
No presentations.
Consent calendar, minutes adoption, and appropriation for road maintenance, $8,720. We need a motion to approve the appropriation?
You can just do the consent calendar with one motion.
Okay.
With the adoption of the consent calendar?
Mr. Powell?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Reisner?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Here. Next on our agenda is presentations.
No presentations.
Consent calendar, minutes adoption, and appropriation for road maintenance, $8,720. We need a motion to approve the appropriation?
You can just do the consent calendar with one motion.
Okay.
With the adoption of the consent calendar?
Mr. Powell?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Reisner?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Here. Next on our agenda is presentations.
No presentations.
Consent calendar, minutes adoption, and appropriation for road maintenance, $8,720. We need a motion to approve the appropriation?
You can just do the consent calendar with one motion.
Okay.
With the adoption of the consent calendar?
Mr. Powell?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Reisner?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye. Next is public hearings?
No public hearings.
We're all good. Board considerations, regulations governing utility service update and setting a public hearing. Mr. Powell?
The revising the James City Service Authority regulations is part of the strategic plan. These regulations have not been comprehensively revised in about 30 years. Over the past couple of years, interdepartmental team with representatives from the service authority and the county attorney's office has reviewed the regulations, and the proposed revised regulations are in your packet. The goals of the revised resolution or revised regulations are to simplify the regulations, make sure that they are consistent with current law and current practices. The primary changes to the proposed regulations, I would say, are three. One is that it changes the requirement to connect for a residence from 300 feet to 55 feet. It also eliminates a number of programs that are previously part of the regulations that really don't need to be part of the regulations, so we're proposing to just take those out of the regulations. Things like the cross-control program, the fog program, things like that, don't need to be part of the regulations. And then lastly, it does make some fairly, I would characterize, modest fee changes for things like plan review that really haven't been updated in many, many years. So that's a summary of the proposed regulations. The next step is for a public hearing, and the resolution in your packet, if you adopt it, would authorize a public hearing for the next meeting on October 27th. And I guess I would suggest, if you have any questions on the regulations between now and the 27th, please let me know and be prepared to discuss them at your meeting on the 27th. Otherwise, I would just recommend that you authorize a public hearing for the October 27th meeting.
So we need a motion, then, to set the public hearing for October 27th?
Yes.
So moved.
Mr. Powell?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Reisner?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye. All right, that is set for October 27th, then. Board requests and directives? Okay?
Yes, I did have one item. Mr. Powell, I understand that the Newport News Water Works is having some problems in billing, getting their billing statements out on time, and it may be causing some problems both in terms of customers and all of the Newport News Water Works customers in James City County, our residents of the Roberts District, I believe, but also maybe causing some problems with us in terms of credits for sub-meters. Is that right?
That's correct.
Could you explain a little bit about what's going on here, just so that our public knows?
Sure.
That there is an issue?
Sure. Newport News Water Works has experienced some issues with their contractor that reads their meters, so they're behind in their meter reading. And as a result, they're going to estimate some bills this month. So there are residents of James City County who are Newport News Water Works customers who will be getting an estimated bill for this month. And their bill should note on the bill that it is an estimated bill. Where that creates an issue for James City Service Authorities in submeter credits, because of the estimated, because of the estimated bill, we, you know, our submeter credits are based on the actual use. So there's going to be some issues with submeter customers. We have approximately 600 to 700 submeter customers who are Newport News Water Works customers. So that's the universe of customers that we're talking about that could potentially have an issue. And I also would say that I've spoken with several of you individually about this over the last few days. We do think we have come up with a system to hopefully be able to identify the folks who might have an issue a little more easily than I thought we were going to be able to. In terms of communication with the public, our plan is, we can identify that universe of customers that are Newport News Water Works customers that are also have sub-meters, and we're going, for those that, how we have email addresses, we're going to email them and let them know that there's a potential issue. And then we're going to send out a postcard to all of those, all the customers. Again, just that, those customers that are Newport News Water Works customers and are our submeter customers. I'm glad that we can do a more targeted communication, because if, putting out a general press release, I think, would have created a lot of confusion, but we're going to be able to just target those customers that are potentially affected. And it has the potential to create some additional workload for us to be able to go back and reconcile the submeter credits later and after the fact, but I think that, I think that we're going to be able to do that.
And do we know that whether Newport News has notified all of its customers about the problems with their billing system?
They have, they have notified in certain ways. I know they've done some Facebook and social media. I believe in terms of the customers themselves, they've put it on the bill message.
Thank you.
What else?
I know the only thing I would just add is I want to thank you for taking the time recently to sit down with us and go over the variety of different things that the service authorities working on and things in the future. I very much appreciate that, and just want to thank you for it.
Okay. General manager's update?
I would just draw your attention to the dashboard. I don't think there are any surprises, but this month's dashboard does reflect the year end for fiscal year 20, and it did, it did reflect what I thought it would, which is we were, we actually collected more revenue than anticipated in the operating side, but we're behind what we expected on the capital side. You might have also noticed, demand was down a little bit this month. It was a very wet month. And you may have also noticed that our delinquencies, at least the financial amount of our commercial delinquencies went down pretty significantly. That was the result of resolving one rather large delinquency. So you saw, should have seen that on the report as well.
Good. With that, then, we'll look for a motion to adjourn until 4:00 p.m. on October 27th, 2020, for a regular meeting. Mr. Powell?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Reisner?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye. All right, that is set for October 27th, then. Board requests and directives? Okay?
Yes, I did have one item. Mr. Powell, I understand that the Newport News Water Works is having some problems in billing, getting their billing statements out on time, and it may be causing some problems both in terms of customers and all of the Newport News Water Works customers in James City County, our residents of the Roberts District, I believe, but also may be causing some problems with us in terms of credits for sub-meters. Is that right?
That's correct.
Could you explain a little bit about what's going on here, just so that our public knows?
Sure.
That there is an issue?
Sure. Newport News Water Works has experienced some issues with their contractor that reads their meters, so they're behind in their meter reading. And as a result, they're going to estimate some bills this month. So there are residents of James City County who are Newport News Water Works customers who will be getting an estimated bill for this month. And their bill should note on the bill that it is an estimated bill. Where that creates an issue for James City Service Authorities in submeter credits, because of the estimated, because of the estimated bill, we, you know, our submeter credits are based on the actual use. So there's going to be some issues with, with submeter customers. We have approximately 600 to 700 submeter customers who are Newport News Water Works customers. So that's the, that's the universe of customers that we're talking about that could potentially have an issue. And I also would say that, I've spoken with several of you individually about this over the last few days. We do think we have come up with a system to hopefully be able to identify the folks who might have an issue a little more easily than I thought we were going to be able to. In terms of communication with the public, our plan is, we can identify that universe of customers that are Newport News Water Works customers that are also have sub-meters, and we're going, for those that, how we have email addresses, we're going to email them and let them know that there's a potential issue. And then we're going to send out a postcard to all of those, all the customers. Again, just that, that, those customers that are Newport News Water Works customers and are our submeter customers. I'm glad that we can do a more targeted communication, because if, putting out a general press release, I think, would have created a lot of confusion, but we're going to be able to just target those customers that are potentially affected. And it has the potential to create some additional workload for us to be able to go back and reconcile the submeter credits later and after the fact, but I think that, I think that we're going to be able to do that.
And do we know that whether Newport News has notified all of its customers about the problems with their billing system?
They have, they have notified in certain ways. I know they've done some Facebook and social media. I believe in terms of the customers themselves, they've put it on the bill message.
Thank you.
What else?
I know the only thing I would just add is I want to thank you for taking the time recently to sit down with us and go over the variety of different things that the service authorities working on and things in the future. I very much appreciate that, and just want to thank you for it.
Okay. General manager's update?
I would just draw your attention to the dashboard. I don't think there are any surprises, but this month's dashboard does reflect the year end for fiscal year 20, and it did, it did reflect what I thought it would, which is we were, we actually collected more revenue than anticipated in the operating side, but we're behind what we expected on the capital side. You might have also noticed, demand was down a little bit this month. It was a very wet month. And you may have also noticed that our delinquencies, at least the financial amount of our commercial delinquencies, went down pretty significantly. That was the result of resolving one rather large delinquency. So you saw, should have seen that on the report as well.
Good. With that, then, we'll look for a motion to adjourn until 4:00 p.m. on October 27th, 2020, for a regular meeting. Mr. Powell?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Reisner?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Reisner?
Here.
President? Okay, we have board discussions, and our first one is going to be Colonial Behavioral Health fiscal year 2019, 2020 performance contract amendment and extension agreement. Ms. Benroot?
Hi, hello, everybody. I would like to, first, before I go into this, introduce David Ko, who's the executive director of Colonial Behavioral Health, who is here, if you have any questions. The performance contract is something that, you know, comes about every year. There was a change in the date as far as the shift for COVID and those kinds of things, but as you can see in the agenda item, it's really just something that's perfunctory and necessary to, you know, go forward with the services. At this point, I mean, the contract will go forward whether or not you approve it. It's just something to bring it forward in case there are any questions that you may have or any discussions that you want to have as far as the services that they provide.
Are there any questions, discussion?
Maybe I misunderstood what the intention was today. So it's just to approve this, moving ahead with the contract as opposed to any informational materials about what's happened so far?
Correct. There isn't, the next agenda item goes into a related but, you know, separate item.
Okay.
But for this performance contract, it really is just, like I said, a perfunctory, and, you know, Mr. Ko could answer more details if you had more specific questions about the purpose of it.
We'll just wait for this.
There does need to be an approval of it if you...
So I'll move for the approval of the contract extension.
Stevens, we have a motion? Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Reisner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so the second item, and sorry for the confusion for that, is, as you all are aware, the county entered into a contract with Health Management Associates to do a consultation regarding any, regarding any particular organizational alignment between Colonial Behavioral Health and Old Town Medical and Dental Center. So we started this in March, so during COVID, we've been meeting with them, and they've been doing all of their work, and they'll go into details about what they did and what their findings and recommendations are. But before that, I also want to make sure that you are aware that Erin Thompson, who is the new executive director of Old Town Medical and Dental Center, is here, as well as Mr. Ko and Carol Sale from the Health Foundation, Williamsburg Health Foundation. So they have been really instrumental in helping through this process, as well as representatives from York County and from the city of Williamsburg. So this has been a very collaborative process to reach the conclusion of this. And at this time, we have Gail Mayo and Josh Rubin, who are from Health Management Associates, who are coming to us from their various locations and will do the actual presentation.
I am Gail Mayo. We will go ahead and get started. Josh, can you share a presentation? So hi, everyone. I am Gail Mayo. Josh is going to introduce himself in the interest of time when he gets to his slide, but we are going to take a few minutes today and explain our work and a little bit about who we are and what we did over the past six months. So Health Management Associates is a national consulting firm. We work with a lot of organizations, including primary care and behavioral health providers. We also work largely in the publicly funded healthcare space, and we work a lot with localities, municipalities, state governments, federal governments. Our work here was really to look at options for collaboration between Old Town Medical and Dental Center and Colonial Behavioral Health. So what we're going to talk about today with a very brief agenda is some of the implications of the current healthcare environment, many of which you already know, our process and findings, then four imperatives that we identified that really should drive decision-making at both an individual organizational level as well as for any future collaboration. Then Josh will walk us through some options for considerations, and then we'll talk about creating a glide path, which is essentially, for a future model, which is essentially saying, from where we are now and what we identify the future model, what are those elements we have to think about and we have to address so that we don't overly disrupt the system if we develop a new model. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and talk very briefly about the healthcare environment. So the current model that both Old Town and Colonial Behavioral Health offer is what we would call a single specialty. So in large part, they are offering either behavioral health services with a little bit of primary care or primary care services with a little bit of behavioral health. That's probably not sustainable as our country and the state of Virginia, as well as, because of the Medicaid expansion, as we move to what is called value-oriented payments, where we're really no longer paying on the fee-for-service model, where it's very transactional. I see my provider, the provider gets a check for my visit. Now, it doesn't really matter if I see my provider, but it's how well my provider keeps me so that I don't experience higher costs and higher healthcare interventions. So there is a need at an organizational level, whether they do it together or not, to develop an integrated model that can really take care of, can no longer divide the head from the rest of the body, that can take care of the whole body. Data sophistication and value-oriented payments is going to be absolutely key for anyone to be successful. Not only do we have to be able to sort of electronically translate what we did with a patient or a client in an exam room, but we need to be able to wrap our arms around whole populations of patients, either by disease state or by social determinative health, and really directly target care to them. Again, we need to keep people healthy so that we can get paid. We're no longer going to be guaranteed payment just by having had a visit. We will ultimately be paid whether or not somebody stays healthy. And then finally, Medicaid providers need to get efficient at capturing all available revenue. So when the state of Virginia in 2019 adopted Medicaid expansion, you really want to have an emphasis and a focus on ensuring that if there's revenue on the table, that you're able to capture it. And that's really because there will become downward pressure on rates so that it will take more visits to generate a payment, or to generate the same amount of payment. And the current model right now, the emphasis on patient service revenue, as you know, you all support, as well as the Williamsburg Health Foundation, the Old Town and Colonial Behavioral Health at a very high level, while that is incredible and remarkable and it's being great community servant, if you're not focused on making sure that you're capturing your revenue from your Medicaid dollars, that tends to become problematic going into the future. And finally, you need the staffing and the infrastructure to make sure that you can both enroll and then re-enroll Medicaid users. And that's really where we see a big hiccup with Medicaid expansion, is that enrollment is new for a lot of folks, and so they will bounce in and out of Medicaid. I'm going to turn it over to Josh to introduce himself, although, by the way, I went so fast, I didn't introduce myself. I am more the primary care expert. I ran a federally qualified health center for 12 years in upstate rural New York, taking it from a somewhat bankrupt, data-challenged organization to actually doubling the size of the clinic and tripling the size of the income statement, and ultimately winning quality awards because we could do data well. And I'm super proud of my clinic for that. I don't take personal credit for that, but that's how I came to be a part of this project. My colleague, who is in our New York City office, is on the other side of the, of the behavioral health primary care divide, so I'll let him speak.
Thanks, Gail. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Josh Rubin. As Gail said, I'm a principal in the New York City office with HMA, and my background is in behavioral healthcare, where I have been a service provider, I have been an advocate, and I have been a government official here in New York City. We're going to speak very quickly about some of this stuff. There's a lot more detail in the, in the white, in the report that we prepared, or in the much longer slide deck that we have delivered in other places, but these are just some of the highlights for you all today. We did look carefully at all of the data from both organizations, programmatic data, financial data, any data we could get our hands on. We interviewed a total of 37 different stakeholders and folk from both Old Town and from CBH, and then we looked at the, at the environment, both at the federal level and at the, at the level of the Commonwealth, as well as some of the local data about, about the community that you all represent. I'm not going to get into too much detail about our findings. I will say that with respect to both organizations, what we found was a remarkable degree of quality and effort given very thin budgets. Both organizations have much to recommend about the quality of the care that they provide. Both organizations have some significant structural, financial challenges as a result of the ways in which they are funded, and as Gail said, the way in which the healthcare delivery system is moving. What we found at CBH was some pockets of truly exceptional program quality, truly extraordinarily good program quality, and some other pockets where things were a little bit more uneven. But the key finding there with respect to both CBH and Old Town Medical and Dental Center is that neither of them are integrated into a comprehensive, coordinated, and integrated system of care. Each of them, as Gail said, is able to meet a specific need of the people that they serve very well, but is unable to meet the totality of the needs of the people that they're serving, and this leads to long-term problems with respect to both quality and finance, as Gail mentioned, the payment methodology is changing. Both organizations are in pretty good financial shape, considering the very thin funding that both organizations have lived with. Some of that financial health and well-being, in the case of CBH, is very heavily dependent on their relationship with York County, in the same way that with respect to Old Town, it's very heavily dependent on their relationship with James City County. And what we found in our process was that access to the Virginia retirement system benefit was a critical for maintaining the staffing at both organizations, and the staffing of both organizations is very stable, especially CBH. Some of the tenures were exceptionally long, some of the leadership, but the reality is that neither organization is exempt from the simple shortage of healthcare personnel, and particularly on the behavioral health side, that was, that is a nationwide shortage of behavioral healthcare personnel and is being badly exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic. Again, at Old Town, what we found is very productive nurses, APNs, and a tremendous amount of dedication of the population for both organizations, but at the end of the day, what we saw was the need for both organizations in four areas to make some pretty substantial steps in a positive direction in the coming couple of years. On the, on the programmatic and clinical side, there's this tremendous need to provide integrated care. What the data show, and this is not just a couple of small studies, this is dozens of randomized controlled studies all over the country in lots of different settings with lots of different populations, they show that integrated care works better. And when you integrate primary and behavioral healthcare, you get better outcomes, you get lower costs, you get happier patients, and you get happier providers. We also noted that there is not enough care management capacity. Both organizations are providing very valuable bricks, but there's not the mortar that holds those bricks together in the form of care management. On the financial side, we saw two organizations that do not have tremendous efficiencies, do not have tremendous economies of scale, and that are hamstrung to some extent by those lack of efficiencies and lack of economies of scale. With respect again to both organizations, the need to attract and retain talent and to develop some bench depth, and critically, to have the support staff who are necessary in order to maximize revenue, and that's a key piece that we keep coming back to, because ultimately, every nickel is going to count in the coming years, and having the staff available who can chase down those nickels is really absolutely mission-critical. And then on the public policy side, two things are happening. The first is this huge influx of folks into Medicaid, in part because of Medicaid expansion, in part because of the pandemic and the economic devastation the pandemic has wrought, and then the move to alternative payment methodologies, what you all in the Commonwealth of Virginia are calling value-oriented payments. And this is this idea that instead of paying for volume, we're going to pay for value. And so on the clinical side, as I said, huge return on investment when you provide primary care. You invest a dollar, you're going to have six and a half dollars of return. It's a really great investment and much better outcomes for both chronic behavioral health conditions and chronic medical conditions, and what you see is greater provider satisfaction. SAM, so the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, has laid out a sort of a six-step process towards getting to integrated care. Right now, excuse me, Old Town and CBH are really operating at a level one or a level two, and we think that it would be critically important for them to get as close to a level six integration, where there's a truly transformed, integrated practice, where the team provides care to the clients, where people have the totality of their healthcare needs met, where we can finally get past the sort of mind-body divide that's been with us since Descartes, and at this point, really is not helpful in terms of producing positive health outcomes. In addition to the clinical and programmatic imperative, there are some pretty substantial financial imperatives, which Gail is going to tell you about. really see the benefit is if you were to co-locate them, or if you were to merge them. And in year one, doing nothing, you know, that's that just merge, no expansion, your profitability rate goes up to over 10%, stays there in the first year of an expansion, and it actually drops to about 9%, 8.89% in year three of the model. But that's only because I went through and gave folks a pretty significant raise to start bringing people up to market rate, to start to address that HR perspective. So the difference between the models, this is something that, you know, you can spend some time on this slide, and if there is a slide I would queue up for you, it would be Josh's slide that actually demonstrates the model, and this slide, because it really calls out what is kind of the important findings. Co-location is only going to offer you limited savings, so if you're going to do all of this stuff, you really probably need more savings and more pooled resource so that you can strategize around expansion. Merge with no changes does improve profitability, but again, it's not going to impact sustainability because you're too thin. Both organizations as they exist right now are too small and too thin, they need bench. Merge with defined expansion is going to give you that sweet spot. It's going to allow you to be profitable and to be sustainable. From a human resources perspective, the real key here is that you're able to retain and attract talent, that you have enough resources to build out your staffing for sustainability and transition to population-based health, and how you're going to get paid into the future. It was really important to acknowledge the benefit structure that is going to support and retain this existing staff. And then I think something that we can't underestimate is that providers really prefer to work in integrated settings. They repeatedly express higher levels of satisfaction professionally. They perceive that they are able to function better, that the system functions better, and that they can provide care better. This, I call my money slide, and it's not a money slide, but this, to me, is what expansion could look like, a merge and expanded model. And if you can see, there's 15 new staff. That gets you to that bench strength that we were talking about. So it allows you on behavioral health to add a psychiatrist or psychologist, two peers and two LCSW counselors. On the medical side, a nurse practitioner, two nurse practitioners, two nurses, two care managers, maybe more importantly, two billers, including one from FightTodder, and then also two IT staff to really manage the healthcare information, which is how you're going to get paid. So that is really the HR imperative. I'm going to let Josh talk about public policy.
Yeah, and as we've mentioned, right, Virginia is moving to value-oriented payments, and I just want to stress, this is a transformational change in the service delivery environment, something I can talk about for many hours, but I'm not going to do that today. But I want to stress, this is not something that's happening with a single payer in the Commonwealth. While the Commonwealth has moved aggressively to embrace value-oriented payments, you'll see on the Medicaid side, the move to value-oriented payments is actually lagging both the commercial side and the Medicare side. And you can see across the country, the Medicare has really been leading this change to value-oriented payments. And just last week, CMS came out with a new roadmap, which moves even more heavily in this direction. So that led us to looking at those imperatives to consider a number of different options. Co-location, some sort of a joint venture, what's called an independent practice association, or some kind of a merger situation. And what we did is we looked at each of those potential options against the imperatives that we had identified. And what we saw is that co-location does modestly prepare for the influx of uninsured Medicaid recipients, but for the most part, co-location doesn't solve the problems that we had identified. If they establish an independent practice association together, that addresses some of the problems a little bit more substantially, especially the preparation for value-oriented payments, and it does generate some of the efficiencies and economies of scale, but really, the payoff happens with a merger. When a merger happens, that's where the organizations really begin to address the imperatives that we had identified, really begin to move the needle on being able to change the way they provide care, change the way they get paid for care, attract the talent that they're going to need, and prepare for the influx of Medicaid recipients as a result of both Medicaid expansion in the Commonwealth and the COVID-19 pandemic. And then Gail will bring us home, talking a little bit about how you get from here to there.
Well, thanks, Josh. And I knew I was going to put myself on mute and not take myself off appropriately. So, you know, I want to take one quick step back, because we have flown through this presentation today, and I want to acknowledge one thing, and that is really, that when we looked at this, we wanted to create sustainability and the opportunity for growth and expansion, really to meet the needs of your community, and particularly because both organizations serve a great number of uninsured and uninsurable people, it really becomes imperative that you can maximize your revenue in other areas so that you can maintain mission. And that really is kind of both at the heart of what we do, the heart of what we believe. You know, if you think about maintaining your ability to make sure that everybody has access to care, and that it's high-quality care, right? Because you've built something a little bit bigger, a little more expanded, so that you can do a better job for those folks who come to you. So when we talk about creating a glide path, we always start kind of over here with the human impact of, you know, if you were to develop a new model, being co-located, being greater collaboration, or even being a merged model, it starts with the people, and you really have to understand the human resources impact. Who's going to stay? Who's going to leave? Their benefits, the reporting structures. And then you get into the board structure, right? Because that's another human impact. Those are the folks that represent all of the folks that are treated at the clinic. So how do you make sure that everybody is still represented? Then you have to address the shared electronic health record so that you can transition into value-oriented payments, as well as make sure you're doing a better job with population health and quality of care. You need to create this new C-suite and leadership team and keep them engaged. You have legal issues that you would have to address between being a community services board and a nonprofit, and so that needs to be a big key part of the problem or part of the solution. And then you have to have a communication strategy, and you have to keep all persons involved. But I think the thing that really strikes me about this slide, and what tells us about this slide, is that the heart is what you do and how you do it. And it's really putting that patient together, reattaching their head to their body, taking care of the whole reason why that person is here. We know that somebody does not experience a behavioral health issue necessarily in a vacuum. We know that they don't experience a medical issue in a vacuum, and that's social, the social determinants of health. Those things, such as access to safe food and safe housing and freedom from fear from domestic violence, those things impact how healthy we stay, and creating a model that allows you to address physical, behavioral, and social determinants of health. These are, this is Josh and myself, this is also our colleague, Mary Kay Brusseau, who is a Virginia resident and was instrumental on this project, and that's how you can get ahold of us. I think we went slightly over our 20 minutes, but we can take questions if you all have time. Otherwise, we appreciate you taking the time for us today.
Not sure if our questions are directed towards them or towards what's next. I mean, I guess that's my question.
Well, I think if you have questions about their presentation and what was in the report, now's the time to ask them, and then I can certainly answer what's next.
I guess the main question that I really have, that I still don't quite understand the answer to, is the emphasis on profitability that we see in this for one agency that we know was created specifically for the purpose of addressing the needs of those who are uninsured or underinsured, kind of last resort. And even with the movement to Medicaid expansion, we know that there were going to be people left behind who would not have the ability to access those programs for one reason or another. And what happens to that imperative as we move forward, especially as we're talking about consolidation, or partnership, or whatever the various terms may be, with an agency that effectively is more or less governed through state directives and public policy determinations? So I would want to have a much clearer sense of what happens to the essential values that each of these organizations have. I understand the importance of treating the whole person, and I think that's a laudable thing. The question of the profitability, especially when, you know, it's sort of the end product of the profitability on one of the reforms, is basically to get Old Town to where it is. So I guess I'm a little uncomfortable with the questions that are still out there about how something like this might actually work in a way that continues to serve the missions that we have, and in particular, the missions that are the homegrown determinations by our three local communities in the historic triangle, that there were people who had medical needs that were not being served, and that it was an obligation of the community to find a way to do that. And the local governments were an important partner in that, as was the Health Foundation and the public, who have significantly contributed, something that isn't part of the model for the CBH, which performs an extraordinary job and is now, you know, being expected to expand its operations as well, just by two cents.
And Josh, is that something you feel comfortable addressing?
Yeah, so I think two things, and I'm really glad you asked that question, because that really is the heart of what has been important for all of you. While we did look at profitability, the one thing you should know is that when we built the model, and when I built the financial model, I built it so that you would never, as you became more and more sustainable financially, it would never force you to sort of get into a position where you couldn't provide as much care for free as you do now. So that was really important to me, to preserve the ability for the uninsured and the indigent who couldn't afford to pay for care to still have a place to come and get care. So currently, the way you're funding your model is that of every dollar spent, 80%, or of every dollar spent on care, 80% comes from other sources, and 20% comes from patient service revenue. So if we could start to pick up patient service revenue, we could provide more care to individuals who are uninsured, and we could expand that model. And that was really what drove the profitability question and the sustainability question. And additionally, you know, just the risk of facing some downward pressure, and maybe it won't happen at the municipality level or at the private donation level, that that could put some financial risk in play for both organizations. Josh, I'll turn it over to you if you have anything else.
Yeah, I mean, I think the point here is that these are not organizations that have shareholders who are going to take any of those profits out. Whatever money is left over at the end of the year gets reinvested in the infrastructure that's going to enable these organizations to provide a higher quality of care to the people that they serve. And ultimately, you know, that's the bottom line. How many people are they providing care to, and how high quality is that care? And ultimately, if they're, you know, when I was an agency executive, my CFO used to say to me, "No money, no mission." And so the idea here is to make sure that these organizations have access to the resources that are going to enable them in the coming years, to continue to provide the free care to the populations that don't have insurance, but to up their game with respect to the care that they're providing to everybody in the community. And that was really the objective of this undertaking.
Yeah, I guess I didn't, maybe it's a matter of communication, just didn't see that very clearly expressed in this, and I still think that there are some very practical questions involved in how this kind of dance plays out.
Chairman, members of the board, I think, you know, action-wise, we really wanted to bring this to you as an awareness. It is something that the Health Foundation had funded. We do receive the funding, so it's our contract, so we were bringing that back. Mr. Ko and Mr. Thompson are both sharing with their board members and their staff, so they're aware of this conversation, and we just wanted to make sure you were aware of it, had access to the consultants. I do appreciate Gail and Joshua condensing it. This is about an hour and a half or two-hour discussion that we've got out of them in just over 20 minutes, so I want to thank them for that. And so their speaking quickly and moving through it was purposeful, to just give you that overview, but certainly, if you have detailed questions later, we certainly would want to get those answers to you. And there is a process, and it really is a decision of the two boards. It isn't so much our decision for them to do it or not. We were trying to help provide information that would guide the boards and give them some direction and some conversation, and they will have to decide, as the independent boards, are they going to work together to discuss this any further or not? And I hope that they will at least discuss whether it's co-located or merging together, that they will do what's in the best interest of the customers that they serve, or the individuals they serve as well.
Well, I guess I would only add to that, that there are some very concerning things that were brought forward in here, and since there is money that comes from us, I mean, if they're two boards decide that this isn't something that they wish to do, I would hope that you would come back to us at some point with that report, and then we would need to make a decision moving forward about how we might want to continue in our funding.
Yes, I think as they go along and have some progress and make progress, or run into some roadblocks, there'll be some things they stumble into about how do they move from here. I would expect we would have some reporting back to you on that. And we do have a number of members from our staff that serve on each board. Their boards are much larger than our members, but we do have input and knowledge of what's going on there. And Mr. Ko and Mr. Thompson have both been very communicative with our staffs and us in terms of what their thoughts and their least approach to it would be. So again, I think you would have that expectation, and we would deliver on that to bring information back.
Is there any type of timeline?
I know that Gail has said, if we sit on it too long, you sort of lose any energies with that, so they are presenting these months, over these four weeks, between Colonial Behavioral Health and the Old Town Medical and Dental Center boards, that they all are hearing that. So our hope is that over the next three to six months, they would work through that process and have an outcome to either do it or not. It'll take some time to work through the details, but if we wait a year to start thinking about it, I think we lose the ability to do it. And so the push from the consultants and from us has been to at least have the conversation. What you come up with, we'll try to figure out where we go from there. But it is their decision, at least on the structure, and to your point, we do control a small part of the funding, and so we just want to make sure, at least where I see it, that our funding is doing the most it can do to serve the residents that are needed in our community.
So a few questions or a few comments. The, what I'm looking at, it appears to be that we've got two great organizations, and we're going to merge into one and be a one-stop shop, is what I'm gathering, what we're attempting. And with that, be able to have more profitability in this, and I'm hoping with having more profitability in this, then we can also do more for the community that can't do and we can't do right now. I think it's going to position us in a better position to be able to reach more people and do more things than maybe we currently can do now because of funding and limits that we can, you know, so by putting everything underneath one, it'll give us a stronger financial backing, then hopefully to reach more people that don't have the ability to get to these services and the need of the community. Does that pretty much sum it up? Does that sound like Rebecca?
I think that's a good summary.
That was an excellent summary.
Excellent. Way to go.
Paying attention.
Any other questions or questions?
No, it was very fast, that's all I'll say.
Very good.
It was the slide movement, that was, woo!
Well, as Mr. Stevens, these slides will be available for you, as well as the full report that you already have. And so as far as the next steps, the Williamsburg City Council is going to hear this presentation, and then the two boards are going to, you know, hear the presentation, and then again, as Mr. Stevens said, make the decision as to what the recommendation is from here. The internal working group that we've had, that, you know, has been going all along, will come back to the table and then decide from there, from what the two boards decide, how are we going to move forward. how we're going to move forward. But I think at the end of the day, I don't see us going backwards. I certainly see us going forwards, because again, this is what's best for the community. We have a lot of folks that need that holistic approach, and so I think at the very least, this will continue the collaboration and the conversation. So it definitely was worth it to at least have the conversation and to move it forward, and we'll see what it goes from there, but we'll certainly keep you guys posted as far as what happens from here.
Thanks to the Williamsburg Community Health Foundation for their partnership on this for sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Roen. Okay, I believe our next issue is going to be space needs assessment. Sean Gordon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Stevens. With me today is Grace Boone, Tony Bell, Managing Principal for Mosley Architects, and Adam Booker, the Project Manager with Mosley Architects. Before we start, I'd like to give a couple of thank yous to county administration and the executive team for their participation and feedback. It was vital for the validity of this document, very, very good information that we incorporated in. And then a special thank you to Julie Northcott Wilson with Parks and Rec and Grace Boone for coordinating all the interviews. I'll mention how many of those we have a little bit later, so it was a lot. A few of the project highlights I'd like to share. The assessment was identified by the Board of Supervisors in the strategic plan. Under goal number two was an operational initiative. The last county administration assessment was completed in 1999, but it excluded the schools. This assessment includes the Williamsburg-James City County Courts, Williamsburg-James City County School Administration, and James City County Administration. To complete the assessment, 66 questionnaires were filled out, over 132 interviews and follow-up interviews were conducted, and 73 functional division spaces were incorporated. The current and future needs looked at efficient and effective uses of the spaces, both the personnel, which were the office spaces, and support spaces, meeting rooms, conference rooms, copy areas, to complete each job function. So it didn't really focus on the existing space uses that we have in each of the facilities today. And then as a result, I think we've developed a comprehensive report that, you know, can be used for future master plan needs and also for the facility's master plan. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Tony Bell with Mosley Architects to give the overview through a PowerPoint presentation.
Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Stevens, good afternoon. So I'm really here for you to answer any questions you have. We've got a PowerPoint presentation. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look through the report. It is hefty with a lot of numbers, so we will try to gloss over that this afternoon and give you sort of the high-level summary of the conclusions that were reached. The real goal of this exercise is to develop a proactive approach to being space needs. So, you know, the overview is, you know, we identified current and five and 10 and 20-year space needs for the county, and in some respects, the city as well with regard to courts and school board. But it's really ultimately to develop a proactive approach. We have a lot of numbers now. We use the population provided by the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission as far as our population projections. And we developed these space needs in meeting with all the different departments. As Sean was saying, you know, over 66 questionnaires were filled out. That was different divisions within the county, within the county and city with regard to courts and schools. And we looked at the evaluation of the current utilization of space, and I must say, you know, everyone deserves an exemplary report as far as how they're using space today. Very innovative, very efficient use of existing space, but as we all probably realize, some of those spaces have deficiencies, some of those departments have deficiencies. So the ultimate goal is to develop a comprehensive report, and from that report can then be created a facility master plan, which can then outlay how the county is going to meet those space needs over the next 20 years. So our project approach started off with reviewing the past study. As Sean said, that study was done roughly 20 years ago. Some of those departments have changed dramatically over the past 20 years in terms of how they deliver services to the citizens of James City County. We conducted a kickoff meeting with all key staff. Those were primarily, you know, department directors and deputy directors. We then distributed a 14-page questionnaire to all stakeholders. And those questionnaires focused not only on personnel space, that is offices and workstations for those staff that serve the county citizens, but also the support space, spaces like we're in right now, you know, the Board of Supervisors meeting room, conference rooms, storage rooms, you know, filing needs, things of that nature. We then conducted interviews with every one of those departments, and then we went back and after we created a draft, had follow-up interviews to make sure, you know, we're looking specifically now at needs, not wants. And there's a key differentiation there, okay? These are not pie in the sky, oh, if we only had this, things would be perfect. These are, we need this to deliver services to our citizens today, and we anticipate these needs going five, 10, 20 years out. We also conducted a space benchmark analysis. So we looked at folks who are currently, that is, have the population currently that James City County anticipates will be in 20 years. So the two we looked at are Alamooral County and Hanover. Alamooral because it bears a lot of similarities to James City County and Williamsburg. It's a relatively suburban county that wraps around a city. So that has a lot of similarities to the relationship Alamooral shares with the city of Charlottesville. Hanover County is a little bit more suburban, a little bit more rural than James City County, but again, its population is about the same. And it's not always an apples-to-apples comparison. Obviously, the way they do social services in Hanover County may be a little bit different than we do social services here in James City County. But there are certain similarities and sort of 30,000-foot views that can be drawing similarities. So if we're way off between two departments, we can put up our hand and ask the individual department heads, why are we seeing these differences, and is there a reason that we can identify on why these differences exist? We also prepared existing space allocations exhibits, that's way, how are you using the space now? We then prepared a space needs draft, I believe that was shared with you a while back, and then from that, we prepared a draft report. We reviewed it with executive leadership, Mr. Stevens and Jason, and then we've obviously prepared presentations, not only for yourself, but also for the school board and the courts and their staff. We prepared a final report, and from that final report, we have some brief summaries. This summarizes basically all of the different departments within the county, and you see the schools and the courts summarized there in just two line items that were represented within the study. These are all the facilities. Now, obviously, many of these facilities are occupied by more than one department, more than one division. However, some of these facilities represent only a partial representation of a total department or division. For example, the fire department, okay? They occupy six different, or excuse me, five different stations. They've got a future Fire Station Six that they're currently planning for, and they've also got their Fire Station headquarters. So it's not looking solely at buildings, it's looking at departments and also how those departments interact with one another. It's also important to realize the difference between net square footage and gross square footage. So we had lengthy discussions with Grace and Sean about those two terms and how they are utilized, and you'll see them utilized frequently throughout the study. So this diagram here shows that the items in green at the top of the diagram, those are what's referred to as departmental net square footage. Those are the individual spaces, the offices, the conference rooms, the workstations that your staff occupy in its delivery of services. Now, obviously, if you put all those spaces together without any circulation spaces between them, it would be a rather inefficient facility, okay? It may even be proved to not work at all. So you need circulation space, you need corridors, you need wall thicknesses, and from that is developed what we call the departmental square footage. And you'll see that basically totaled on every single individual spreadsheet that's in the full report. And that's, you know, basically the size of the suite that would need to accommodate that individual department. When you start to develop buildings, you need those departmental net square footage totals, as well as what's referred to as a grossing factor. So as you can again imagine, if you took all those departments, combined them together without circulation space in between them, again, you would have an ineffective building. So you've got to put in some grossing factors. You also need to put in some shared space, spaces like mechanical rooms, electrical rooms, telecommunication closet. All those spaces add up to be what's referred to as the grossing factor. So when you see the large blue rectangle at the top of the sheet combined with the green rectangle at the bottom of the sheet, within the building as a whole, which is the red rectangle which forms the building, so that's your building gross square footage. And you'll see that building gross square footage for all of your total departments, whether it be county administration, or the Board of Supervisors, or even fire administration. You'll see a building gross square footage requirement. So here you see the summary. On the far left, obviously, is the different buildings, and we've gotten this broken down in the study, both by buildings and by individual departments. Based on who is currently in the building, you see the current gross square footage here in the middle, and then the current need, and then projected out the 2030 and the 2040 need. So you hear, you see here every individual department which exists in the county, and even one which doesn't exist when we're talking about Fire Station Six. And all told, the county currently occupies 320,000 gross square feet. A current need today is 46, that, 468,000 gross square feet, which is a deficit of about 43, 46%. Now, yeah, that's a big number, but then as you see that number projected out 20 years, it's only a growth of 13%. So from 468,000 square feet to 532 square feet, it's 13% growth. So it's not a growth that the county is currently facing, it's really today's current You look at different departments, different divisions, different buildings throughout the study, and there are what I'll call anomalies. That is, departments or buildings which the county has foreseen to build beyond what the current need is, and I'll call it the law enforcement center, because during the course of the study, they were always held up as the exception. They were the department that the county has the fourth thought to say, we're going to build more than what we need so that we have space to grow into. We're going to take a proactive approach. So when the police department grows, we have that space there, and it's ready to accommodate those functions. So as you see right now, it's 49,000 square feet at the law enforcement center. The current need is 44,794. Was it wrong to do that? Of course not. It was fourth thought. So that department can now grow, and you're not immediately faced with a space deficit. So now, the task before the county is determine who is the next department that will reap some additional square footage, and to what extent will we provide for them so that they can also grow into that in the future. So we have these charts also for the courts and the schools, and obviously, this is not all the individual schools, this is just school administration and school maintenance. We looked at both of their campuses and analyzed them. Obviously, as you drill down into the details of this, you'll see different anomalies. For example, I'll bring forth the school administration function. They're currently in a former school. Many of their offices are oversized or undersized, depending as you go from room to room. Why is that? Well, it wasn't purpose-built. We moved in to an existing building and made best we do best we could with those existing walls. That's what you do every day at every facility. It doesn't make any sense at all to move a wall a foot just to make it on-program. So as you move from space to space throughout that school administration building, you'll find some spaces are a little oversized, some are a little under. Doesn't mean we go in and start demolishing to right-size all those spaces, it just means that when we go through our renovation and expansion process, we take that into consideration. For every single department that we interviewed and analyzed, you'll see a breakdown to this level. So every single space, every single position throughout the county has been itemized and totaled, and you know exactly what it's going to be and how big it would be in the case of conference room, how many people are anticipated to be sitting in that conference room if that space was right-sized. This is the benchmarking data, and again, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. No two counties in Virginia run things exactly the same, because their citizens are not the same. You know, they're delivering services based on how their citizens need those services. But it does provide a good big-picture analysis. If we're way out of whack, we need to identify maybe why we're way out of whack in that particular department. We also did what's called development of space standards. What this means is for a particular position within the, whether it be a director or a deputy director, professional staff, or a administrative staff person, there was no across-the-board sort of standard as far as how big of an office a director would get. So we saw great variance from department to department. I won't call anyone out as far as who's got the biggest office in the county, that's not the point of this presentation. But there is variance, and some of that's due to function. You know, I meet with clients in my office, for example, and I need space for those clients to sit within the office. Another department director may say, "I don't meet with clients in my office, I go to the conference room down the hall. Therefore, I have a smaller office, but I still need that conference room." In order to make some across-the-board decisions and plan for space better in the future, we developed space standards from which the county can now better plan. So when you have a deputy director, a department is growing. It only has one director, deputy director today, but in the future, it will have two. When you bring that second deputy director onboard, we now have a prescribed size for how, approximately how big that deputy director's office would be. And we've got that for not only directors, but all the other staff within the county. We also looked at how the county currently delivers services. So instead of just saying, hey, we've always had offices, that's what we should have on in the next 20 years, we analyze, does that really make sense? Do you really require an office? You know, typically, what requires an office is confidentiality or supervisory position. I am counseling my staff, therefore, I need to bring them in the office and counsel them on the way to better deliver services here in the county. Or if they're handling, in the case of confidentiality, they're handling citizens' social security numbers, dates of birth, things of that, things that shouldn't be heard by other members of the staff. So those are typically the two drivers. Anything outside of that, it's up for discussion on whether or not they need a private office or a workstation. So we talk with the different department directors on how they anticipate delivering services over the next 20 years. Maybe the status quo isn't the right way. You know, if they're currently in offices, maybe they do better serve the needs of the citizens in workstations with maybe some huddle spaces and consultation rooms that they can be shared. This is an example of the existing space allocation. It's obviously the building we're in right now, but for every building in the county, we have a breakdown of who occupies what, and obviously, you go one year out, and this starts to become obsolete. So, you know, it's good today, you know, it's accurate today, but as things go throughout the county, it's going to change, and it will need to be updated through time. This is an example, this is not James City County, but this is Warren County, Virginia, up in the northwest corner of the state. And the example here is everything to the left of this line was an expansion. So as you move forward with the implementation, or excuse me, with the planning of a master plan, you'll create diagrams such as this, which show maybe how an existing building may be reallocated, and that's what you see here all in And that's what you see here on the on the right-hand side. And then on the left, how you may do expansions to existing facilities, and how that space can be reallocated to better serve the needs of those departments. And on a campus-wide, this is for Hanover County, Virginia, you begin to see here, the buildings in blue, those are the existing buildings. The buildings in yellow, those are the future buildings. And ideally, in the case of of James City County, you would create a diagram countywide now that would show roughly a half a million square feet of space 20 years out. It's up to the county on where those buildings are going to go. Are there going to be expansions of existing facilities? Is it going to be new buildings on new campuses throughout the county? So that's the next step. You've got the numbers now, you've got the need. It's how you're going to work to plan and and build that need in the future is is what we're getting at. With that, I opened up to any questions? Mr. Stevens, did I miss anything?
Asked for it to be short and sweet. It was a lot of information, and I think you gave a very good at, the board has questions, if not today, as they have them going forward, we'll
Oh, no, not you, not you.
You're going last.
Go ahead, I'll cover it then.
Now, I mean, one thing I noticed you had under voter registrar, because that's, I think, foremost in mine, because I was offices last week, you had 48 employees.
That is correct, that is correct.
So I was going to say that I guess I worry that so often, something like this gets done, which is really valuable, and then it gets away, and we have some very glaring issues. General Services stuck right out to me in what you had, what they had now, and what they it looks to me when I go there like they're in temporary housing that we've just somehow made, kept making it work. I I don't, I mean, kudos to them for that. So, so your recommendation for next steps is then for us to draw up what we think the future should look like, what we want that to be, and start working towards that. And I know you've gone out to 2040. But is there, I mean, can we hold on to this? And then if we don't have the money in 2030, say, okay, well, this is what we need to do to get to 2040? Or do we need to redo this again? To say, so how much of a living document is this? Or should we get moving soon?
You ideally would get, I'm sorry.
He's saying soon, I promise you. I couldn't hear him either, but I know that's what he was saying.
Supervisor Larson, you are accurate in that the document is somewhat has an expiration date. So obviously, the further you wait before moving, the more obsolete the data becomes. At 10 years, we would highly recommend that you update the data, the numbers. And even if you start a master plan today, that in 10 years, you go ahead and update that master plan. Because in in theory, you will have done some improvements. You would have expanded a building, or renovated, or moved some people around throughout the county. And you would want to kind of update the document to say, okay, we've achieved priorities one, two, and three. And now four is priority one for us, and that's what we're going to be moving forward in the next five years. I think you would be safe to move forward with a master plan in the next five years using this data. Are things going to change? Guaranteed. Guaranteed, something in this information will change over the next five years in terms of your delivery of services. You're talking, you know, the the presentation before this. Old Town Medical Center was one of the people we talked to. If you combine them with your other group, that would affect space needs. It may result in a drop in some where we see efficiencies, i.e., I don't want to point the finger at any one staff member, but i.e., if you've got two people doing a job today, perhaps one person could do the job in the future. And as we discussed previously, well, that would enable us to then deliver more services. Because, you know, we've got one person doing two, what was two people's job. Well, now we can hire a different, another person and have three practitioners delivering services on the front end. How does that affect space needs? Well, of course it does. We've only got one person sitting at the front desk. But maybe we don't need as many exam rooms. Or maybe we need the same number of exam rooms, we'll be turning them over faster. Does that make sense?
Yes. So, you know, I think there's always, from your citizenry, there's going to be probably some, oh, just want more office. You know, there's not the realization that I imagine there are some very serious inefficiencies going on because of lack of space right now in some of these more pressing departments. Is that, would that be a true statement?
That is a true statement.
Okay. And then I watched the presentation at the school system, because I was sort of, I was like, well, everybody's working from home. So, you know, what do they need? But I've been, I think everybody's back in that build, the admin building, because the parking lot is absolutely full. So, so that's, so I'm glad to see that you included the the WJCC School Administration as well. So I'm sure I'll have more, there'll, there'll be some comments that'll raise more questions, but I appreciate that so far. Thank you.
I could just ask, maybe you've covered it. First of all, the building that we're in right now, Mr. Stevens, feels like a meat locker. My teeth are chattering. Can we adjust it just a little bit? That, everybody else is okay with that. Maybe I missed it, but you're just looking at space in general. When you put Hanover up there, that's not necessarily the example we would be looking at, is it? I mean, are
It is not.
Okay, because I don't
Not at all.
Thought of another sprawling campus. I don't know if that's the desire of everyone here. Would it be, Mr. Hippel?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking.
So the
I don't know how friendly that is for your citizens either.
It's just space in general you're talking about. And you haven't narrowed it down to what that space is going to look like.
The the takeaway from this document is numbers.
Okay.
You know how much space you need. As far as how that space is going to be partitioned out in the future, that's what still needs to be determined. The the big difference, Ms. Sadler, between you and Hanover, Hanover's mainly centered on this one campus. They have a few satellites. James City County has a lot of campuses.
All over the place.
So you're going to have not only one diagram, you're going to have many diagrams at those different campuses. Perhaps, you know, every fire station is going to get a little expansion. You've got the the operations and maintenance for the for the school buses. That probably will expand in place. So every time we have a little expansion, we're going to need a little campus map of that locale, of that area. I imagine, you know, maybe we still have some function here. What it is in 20 years, I don't know. But we'll probably do some sort of of facility here. As you may or may not be aware, we're looking at the Opportunity Way Campus as well. So where your law enforcement center is is today. So, no, ma'am, this is not an example of where we would head, besides that you would have a a diagram such as this showing existing facilities and new facilities or expansions anywhere you have a current facility or a future facility.
Thank you.
So just to to get back to a question, a comment Ms. Larson made a few minutes ago about, well, everybody's going to be working from home anyway. And that does beg the question, though, of whether there are likely to be some changes in space utilization as a result of technological advances or in response to, you know, a situation like the pandemic.
That was the first question asked by the school board. I guess Ms. Larson knows that. They jumped on that one immediately. Yes, COVID will affect space needs. If there is a pullback and we have more people working from home, basically, what it then determines is that that 20-year need, well, now maybe it's a 30-year need. You know, we're still going to need space, but instead of only meeting our 20-year needs, we now think it could meet our 30-year needs and accommodate more growth in the future. Unless there is a drastic change in the way we deliver services, I think the targets are pretty much still going to hold. I know right now the courts are trying desperately to to open back up and deliver justice to the citizens. And we don't see that changing in the in the short term. Now, to your question about technology, technology has been taken into consideration. And the biggest impact, Mr. McGlynn, is with regard to file storage. So we talked at length with all of your departments about how much paper do you have today? And how much paper are you going to have 20 years from now? And some people are mandated by the state, I've got to have this paper. And I've got to have, I I cannot purge it for the next five years, and it's growing. Others said, I'm now at liberty to get rid of my paper. And you'll actually see in the spreadsheets a reduction from, I have 20 file cabinets today, in five years, I'm going to have 10. In 10 years, I'm going to have four. In 20 years, I'm going to have two. Well, now that space can be used for people space or meeting space. So that kind of technologies is incorporated. With regard to technology that we see around us, that is the sharing of information, i.e., the the fact that we don't maybe need as many citizens in this meeting room, because they're all watching from home right now, that's been taken into consideration. Now, obviously, we can revisit it. And if you go to full implementation, i.e., we're going to do a building, you would, you would pull the individual program out for that building and revisit it before you got too far into the design. Does that make sense? But I think we've taken into consideration the technology impact pretty heartily. As far as COVID, that that's still up for some additional discussion, I think.
Just curious about the voter registrar's office. You know, we now have a new law that allows for, that requires early in-person absentee voting. And currently, that means that our recreation center is going to be occupied for a considerable point of the year. I mean, we are a state that is blessed, cursed with multiple elections in a given year. And I would anticipate that we would see that happening with primaries as well as general elections, where we're going to have to provide some kind of space for people to to early vote. Is that something that's already been figured into account, or is that something that we'd have to?
It's another excellent question and and one of those anomalies. So
Right.
We had lengthy discussions with your voter registrar about that very point. And interestingly enough, I was just talking to to Sean about this before the meeting. We're doing a similar study right now for Albemarle County, and they were very concerned about this issue, to the point of, they had us design a full voter registrar satellite office, greatly expanding the square footage of what they had right before the pandemic. The pandemic hit, and all their staff went home. That solved their problem, because it gave them the parking capabilities at their existing county office building to enable the citizens to then come and park. So the information that's in the study takes into consideration those needs. As far as when that's implemented, it sounds like it's already started to be implemented at the Parks and Rec Facility. The question is, is that a temporary fix? Or is that a permanent fix for James City County? It is a real issue. And every voter registrar in the Commonwealth has the same concerns that are on your mind right now, Mr. McGlynn. I think what the next 45 days are going to tell us is how are our citizenry going to vote? Because what some of our voter registrars were terrified by was that on that 45th day before the election, every county citizen would come that day and be lined up to vote. I don't think that's what happened. But I think we're starting to see people coming in and taking advantage of it, so that they don't all have to be there that first Tuesday in November. But I think we're going to get a good experience over the next 45 days of exactly how our citizens are going to utilize this this opportunity. And then we can take a better look at how we can use our our capital and our our infrastructure to meet that need. But but before, but before this month, we didn't know. And everyone was very worried about it.
Yeah, and and we don't know what the next thing is going to be that's going to require us to have have some space as well. And I understand that we have to be flexible in terms of dealing with that. But I just was was curious about that one. I took away from from your report as the most important aspect, simply that we are starved for current space needs. And it did make me, as as you were doing your presentation, I was sort of wondering about whether, how how we should be guided in terms of providing some of that space, and thinking about things like colocations because of the the need, for instance. I I was a little surprised when you said that, you know, well, we talked to these people, and this person says, oh, well, I meet with my clients in my office. And the next person says, well, I don't like to do that. I just walk them down the hall to the conference room. Those people are going to change over over a 20-year period, at least some of them will. And as as that happens, isn't it, I mean, you you wonder, you know, how can you figure out a way to utilize the space more efficiently so that whoever, whichever of a set of departments may need space, has it available in the same kind of configuration? I think of it in terms of of we're being broadcast to the greater world now. Our school board meets on television and and computer streaming. And we have other public boards that do the same kind of thing, the Planning Commission and like. You know, I guess I'd say, wouldn't we want to have a dedicated space that can handle a lot of that in in a new facility where everybody was sort of, had that available to them on a on a reasonable schedule?
Flexibility and adaptability is is the future. I'm sure that comes as no surprise to you. To to your question about the the discussion we had with the department directors, how one operates versus how another. Yes, ideally, the the, well, I shouldn't say ideally. What we've programmed is that adaptability. That if the the individual says, I'm going to meet in my office, there's enough space to do it that way, or they can go down and meet in that shared conference room. To your point about colocation and whether or not it makes sense to bring different departments together, that's this next step, is determining who are the right fits. Now, you know, obviously, traditionally Commonwealth, excuse me, Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer have always, you know, been together. You know, but who else makes a good fit? And making sure those two are located, or those three, or those four are located together to, again, provide efficiency, not only departmentally, but also for your citizens. So if, you know, if I need to get a permit to do some construction, I'm not having to go to four different buildings. I go to one building, and that's going to streamline the process for for that citizen. And they're going to be more inclined to move forward with their their different projects. So, yes, we've we've put into the into the study that that adaptability, that flexibility. But as far as starting to make those prioritizations and determinations about who's going to go together, who's going to be separated, where those campuses are going to be, that's that next step.
I was just going to allow me to ask follow-ups. One being, going back to what Supervisor McGlynn was asking about technology and that type. There, most of our jobs that deal with the public need to be eventually back on site, like like we're doing now. So, and so I maybe when, as we're going through the master plan, if we get to that process, I guess we could say, okay, what's a job that never interacts with the public, maybe doesn't interact with their colleagues that often? And we might be able to do a telecommuting situation. So, but it's probably not that many.
I would I can think of one. Hopefully, I can volunteer them without Mr. Stevens.
Is it Mr. Stevens?
It is not. It is not. So I'll I'll volunteer one from another, from another locality.
Okay.
So building inspections. All right, building inspections are the folks from the county who go out and look at your buildings that are under construction, whether it's private sector, public sector. They typically, the way they operate, they have a meeting in the morning, lay out a plan, then they go out on the road for the whole day. And they're looking at different job sites, looking at piping going in, electric going in. And at the end of the day, they come back. Now, they they review drawings in the office. But their in-office time is very minimal compared to their out-of-office time. So that's, that's one. So, that's that's one example.
Okay.
Other localities have proposed, all right, we're going to have a training room. And the training room is going to be occupied by building inspectors from 7:00 a.m. or 6:00 a.m. to 7:00. After that, everyone else is going to use it when they're out. And then from 3:00 to 4:00, they're going to be back. So, all of our training needs to occur between 8:00 and 3:00. Because outside of that, our building inspectors are going to use it for their office space.
So then, and then the only other follow-up I had was regarding the voter registrar. The issue is that even if you have, I mean, we had quite a large turnout the first day. And I I have not gotten an update, but I imagine it's been steady. But even if you only had 10 people, you've got to figure out a way to have that, A, the security of that office, and B, not a disruption to their their workflow. So, you still need more. And and while we're taking, we're taking space away from Parks and Rec. So, we're taking away nonprofits' abilities to meet and other things by moving it there. I'm wondering if there was a price, or there was a bunch of money that came with the, from the Commonwealth when they decided all these new voter reg, voting laws. Did we get the check? Did something come, not yet?
Not yet. We're working on that.
Okay.
Not yet. Waiting on that.
Well, I'm very appreciative of expansion of a citizen's right to vote. It would be nice if it came with some ways to pay for it. Thank you.
All right. As of course, everybody knows, this is an exciting topic for me. And I've been on this since day one, and it started before I got on the board, when I was Assistant Chief at the Volunteer Fire Department. And we'd have a storm coming in, and I'd watch all the county having to gather in a certain area. Okay, what are we going to do here? What are we going to do here? What's going to happen here? And we we gathered at 8:00 in the morning. And as the storm intensified, we gathered at 8:00. Then county staff would take it back to all, everybody that they're connected to. And then we'd gather again at 3:00. And I was like, man, this is so efficient. I'm watching all these vehicles ride all over the county to get it. We had to do it, and and that was all we had at that time. And I thought, wouldn't it be nice if we had one building? We're having a meeting at 8:00 a.m. on floor eight. I want everyone, everyone that needs to be in a meeting at 8:00 o'clock there. If something changed, and that storm became a category two or three in the middle of the day, I need a second meeting. It's a push of the elevator. It's it's going to be, and and one thing I've always gone with, if you're going to be a bear, be a grizzly. And that has so much to do with, not only this report, but our whole plan. And this is not going on a shelf with me. This is, I will, and my board members know, I'll I'll keep pushing this baby as hard as I can push, as long as I can. And we'll we'll get it to what it needs to be. The, now, I'm looking at 2040, and it looks like, just my country math, looks like we're a little over 213,000 square feet needed, our first initial need. Because, and and we've done a great job of utilizing space. Y'all know it over there. I mean, those are sheds. They're not offices, they're sheds that are stuck together. And, you know, and it's tough for, you know, you to say, hey, employees, I want you to work out of this shed. We're doing all this. I want you to do all that. And by the way, while it's snowing, your equipment isn't inside anything. Scrape that off and get my roads or my sidewalks cleared and my county cleared and everything you can clear. And and smile while you're doing it, you know. It's being in construction, I know what they're going through and what they have to deal with. So, I, one thing I didn't see, and I may have missed it in the report, was, and it probably, it probably wouldn't be in this report. It would be in more of our master plan of what our facility would look like in the War Hill area, and and how tall it'll be. And and all that would be safety rooms. If something happens, there's a lockdown. I want the employees to be able to go into a room that is locked down and is is bulletproof and safe and and is, you know, they, each floor can get to a a room like that. Also, looking at as we build this, as far as parking garage underneath. I know it's going to run us 25,000 of space for a parking garage. But then we're green, we're putting all the vehicles underneath. We've got gates on each end. County employees come in, they're in a secure location. If it's raining, snowing, they got all this paperwork they're taking home to do stuff for us. And they're underneath the garage, they put it in their vehicle. And until they get out of the garage, they're not getting any weather on them. And it's a, it's not only a safety issue, it's a green issue. And I'll try to be as as fast as possible. The campus thing worked great here as we were growing up. And I said in my, in my campaign, you know, we're growing up as, and we're basically a teenager. Now, we're becoming an adult, and we've got to do more things. And and the campus thing worked, and as we needed a space, we added a space, like most counties do. I can add this space. But we're finding out now, and I know with being in construction, each time you add a space, there's a bigger cost than you think. And if you put it all in one and just stop and go, all right, time out. Let's get this right the first time. Let's get everything we need the first time. Let's do it right, and let's put everything together. Now, my HVACs, my roofs, my landscaping, everything I've got to do in all these facilities that we have, now is one or two buildings, and it's all in one location. As a citizen, I walk into that location, and I can see a school board meeting. I can go to code and compliance. I can do my water. I can pay my taxes. I can check on a piece of land. I can I can do everything in one facility, depending on what floor I go up on. And as a county administrator, I would think, being on the top floor, it'd be easier control and and know what's going on, and he can touch everybody quicker. I've asked people in the county that have been here 15, 20 years, such and such is retiring. How well do you know them? Well, not really, not much, because they're working on the other end of the county. Not because, and we do things to keep, you know, our employees connected. But, you know, to work that long and and not know someone, and they're on the other end of the county, they know them, but they don't know them very well. But in an office setting, you know, oh, yeah, he works or she works on the fifth floor. I'm on the seventh, and, you know, I see him in the hallway. And it just gives more community in our employees in a in a building together. We have band-aided and and done what we could with the money we have for a long time and done an excellent job. I wouldn't say anything bad about anything we've done in the past as far as what we're using. But there's a lot of land that we're utilizing right now that if we combine all this together and put it in one building, then we have other pieces of land we can sell. And that's a tax base and a revenue for another commercial product to come into James City County that, right now, we're utilizing. So, there's a revenue stream there on the backside of that. There's a revenue stream of of what we're using for upkeep and maintenance. There's a revenue stream of how many vehicles we're buying and how green we'll become when we're not having to ride from one place to the other to talk about or meet about this or that. We hit a button, go to the seventh floor in a conference room. Our school boards can have a conference room. Our voter registration can have a room. Our our board meetings, all the board meetings that we have, we have enough, we'll have enough boardrooms that we can have that up there. And the citizen, though, I go to this one place, and I can see every board meeting in James City County. And, you know, and I think it's something that, you know, we have, we're ready for. And and this is, you know, this was great to see, and I was excited about it coming out, because, you know, I knew we had a space needs issue. You can just walk through the county and see it. And the employees are always, well, I can use this, and I can utilize that. I can take this little box and put my stuff in over here. And, you know, and we can share this office and all that. And and COVID has separated us some. So, it's made it even more difficult where, you know, people were sharing rooms. Now, we're like, okay, you're at home, you're in this room, you're in that room. And so, the space is even spread out. More likely, this will come back together eventually when we figure this whole thing out, or someone figures this whole thing out. And and we'll come back closer than than we are right now because of COVID. But, you know, I'm excited to see, and I think this is, this is something that we need to move on quicker than later. Because a lot of times, you get to this point, and then somehow it dies on the shelf. And when it dies on the shelf, the only ones that are going to be holding the bag would be our citizens and our staff, because the citizens are still riding all over town. And and the reason I thought War Hill, because War Hill is centrally located in the county. And also, with another building going in there, it's going to be an economic revenue generator. So, there's another tax thing back to the county that cuts down on the amount of tax that the citizens pay. And we use utilize that to help fund our building and all. So, there's a lot of stuff. I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to talk all night, because I could. This is, this is just as important as the roads are to me. And, you know, I think we're on the right path. I think we're moving in the right direction. This definitely shows the, you know, especially early on, how far we're behind and what we need for James City County. So, not only shows that, but in 40 years, how far we're behind. 213,000 square feet of missing space. That's a lot to make up with a little building here, and a little building here. And then, of course, with our little builds and all, we've all put stuff in place. And that little building has to have a BMP, has to have a certain parking lot, has to have nature, has to have gardens, has to have plants, has to have this, has to have that, which makes our community beautiful. I'm not against that. But each one, it's not only the building cost, but all those added costs around each one, wherein one, it's bigger, but it's cheaper to do it. So, that's why I go back to, if you're going to be a bear, be a grizzly. Let's let's eat it up. That's my two cents. Hey, any other questions?
I had a question.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I do want to thank Tony and Adam. We have harassed them and harassed them and harassed them. They've been very good to work with. Sean gets the the most credit on the staff side of doing all the meetings and all the coordination. I know he and Grace work very closely together, and it's had in a lot of meetings as well. But I do think we have a good product, and I am appreciative of where we are. And again, I think we will use that and be back to you for the next step of how do we continue the discussion.
When, back with what's next?
You know, part of my intent is between now and October to talk with you about end of year and some dollars and what we bite and refund. And this project is one that was in last year's operational budget. So, we currently don't have funding for it. But I think we do have, as the way we ended the year, we would come back to you and ask you if you want to reauthorize those monies and move forward and try to prioritize some of the other things within our departments. And I'll speak with each of you on sort of numbers that I'm thinking, so you have an idea as we walk into a meeting, either October, hopefully, October timeframe to be able to have that conversation.
And when you're saying that, you're talking about the master plan, not the building, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Master plan's the next step.
Yes, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
The building's in that.
Okay, great.
That is the building. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Next issue item is FY 2021 financial update, Sharon Day.
Good afternoon. Tonight, I'll present an update on the financials for the first two months of this fiscal year, which, of course, started July 1st of 2020. But first, I did want to provide just a quick update on the last fiscal year, fiscal year 2020, which just ended on June 30. Last month, I did provide an update on fiscal year 20. And at that time, we were projecting a year-end surplus of about $6 million. That was mainly made up of expenditure savings. We did projected revenue shortfall of about $3.5 million and expenditure savings of about 9.8, which cumulatively brought us to the surplus of about $6 million. Not much has changed. We are still in the process of going through the audit and closing out our books. And we are still estimating that we're going to fall somewhere between the $6 and $7 million range for fiscal year 20. I did recently receive an update from the CFO at the School Division regarding their in their year-end results for fiscal year 2020. They are estimating that they'll have a surplus of about $5.5 million. Our share of that is about 90%, which would equate to about $5.2 million. Of that $5.2 million, $2 million is already included in the fiscal year 21 budget. It's my understanding that there is an additional request for about $750,000 that would be forthcoming to the board. That would leave a balance of about $2.5 million that would add to our year-end surplus of the $6 to $7 million, meaning the total with the school number included would be about $9 million. We are also planning to apply the CARES Act for COVID-19 presumptive clause to public safety. And what that allows us to do is use CARES funding for some of our personnel costs in the Fire Department and the Police Department. We have about $3 to $4 million that we are applying to CARES Act, which would also add to our year-end surplus. So, without that, we're at about $6 to $7 million. We would add another $2.5 million for the schools, and then potentially another $3 or $4 million by using that presumptive clause from CARES. So, with all that said, we project that we will end somewhere in the range of $12 to $13 million, all-inclusive, for fiscal year 20. A lot of numbers.
Then, when do you start talking with the school CFO about moving forward? Like, what their request is going to look like for next year?
Yes, we have started that conversation. The first part of that starts with enrollment numbers, because it is a joint system. We start with the enrollment numbers as of September 30. We just got the data download this week from the School Division. We utilize our GIS department to analyze that data, as does the city. We spend the next couple of weeks analyzing that information. There's also certain groups of the population that are excluded, those that are considered more non-residents, they're living in temporary housing, going through that process. The next step will be CIP, which will start later this month as well. We've had some conversations with the School Division, again, very preliminary, on what may be forthcoming. For now, the process, the thought process will move forward with requests on what their needs are. Obviously, the funding and what the environment is going to look like from an economic standpoint is still very uncertain. A lot of that depends on what happens with COVID. But we are going about business as usual from a budget perspective as it stands right now.
And when can we expect to know the September? Because I know there were a couple of different pieces of, or not maybe pieces of legislation, but there was a little bit afoot to try to change the September 30 enrollment information to a different date due to COVID. But I, I'm assuming that they're going with September 30, Commonwealth-wide.
Right.
And because there's some, you know, there's some families that have chosen to homeschool. There's some that have chosen different virtual, other than what the WJCC is offering. Don't know if it's enough to make a blip on the screen or not. But when will we see those numbers to see if we have a little bit of a downturn in that enrollment?
We typically finalize the numbers in the November, December timeframe.
Okay.
So, we'll take our first estimate as of September 30. That information is due to the state. The state does their magic with those numbers. And then we typically compare data again in November, December timeframe to see if the numbers have changed substantially. In the past, it hasn't been a material change. Of course, we're in a different environment now.
Thank you.
Question, if I may. The 12 to 13 million surplus, that's with savings, but that's also with COVID monies that have been, that we've been able to utilize to pay different things. If we didn't have COVID, what would our loss be? Because I'm sure there would be a loss without the the COVID money. Do you know what that would be this fiscal year?
What I'm presenting tonight is just the general fund, our operating fund. Our CARES money resides in a different fund, a grants fund. In total, for fiscal year 20, we received about $6.7 million. We did have some other smaller grants, but the CARES money is the bulk of it. Without that, that would have been $6.7 million of expenditures that we would have had to cover. Without that, that would have been 6.7 million dollars of expenditures that we would have had to cover. In terms of the general fund impact, it's about three to four million. That's the public safety application for personnel. The rest of it, as you know, we had a $1.7 million allocation to the school division. That was a big piece of it, and the rest was primarily for PPE needs for the county.
I thought I read somewhere one of the reports and and. I think it was the entire budget without that would be like 39% of a loss. Did I read that somewhere? It was somewhere in there. I think I for some reason 39% stuck in my head, but all the the cost savings we've done. And the COVID money and the changes how we're doing things has not only taken care of that. But it also gave us a savings at the end. So that's something that, you know, we should say something about because, you know, staff has done a great job in going, we're in a problem, we're in an issue. We've got to cut back. We've got to make sure. And we've and we pushed off projects too that will do later dates. But I think that's one thing that, you know, citizens may see, oh, you got 12 or 13 million left. You ought to have any worry at all, you know, but it was due to what staff was doing behind the scenes. To save us while we're doing this and the influx of the COVID money that we were able to utilize in different areas that. That helped us get to this point. Am I correct?
Absolutely. I think that's a very fair statement. The county reacted very quickly to the pandemic. Particularly just compared to other localities that I've spoke to from a financial standpoint. You know, getting the employees to tell the work very soon in the process, the extra cleaning, some of the measures that we put into place. Had we not done so as quickly as we did, it could have been much more costly. We also, within a few days of the pandemic and the emergency order from the state, put in expenditure restrictions, very tight restrictions, much more. Tightly than what I'm seeing across the state. And so the departments stopped spending and only spent for very critical needs. Some of those things, some of these savings are permanent. I think we touched on that last time, your turnover savings by leaving the positions vacant, that type of thing. That's a permanent savings for fiscal year 20. Most of this came from postponing equipment replacements, maintenance of our equipment, furniture and equipment replacements, vehicle replacements, those types of things. The day of reckoning on those things will come. Eventually they need to be replaced and often maintaining your existing equipment is far more expensive than replacing it. So that's just something we need to keep in mind as we're going through the budget process and looking at the surpluses and 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 how to best allocate that.
That's what I just wanted to highlight because, you know, the the papers aren't here. They're normally sitting over there. Well, they were several years ago. And and so hopefully they'll be back someday. But but it it's, you know, for the citizens to understand and know that, yeah, we're, there's going to be a day of reckoning where we're going to have to pick up these costs that we're saving now. But it's sitting at home, I may look at it and go, you got 12 or 13 million dollars extra. And they were worried, you know, but they don't understand that everything that staff did and what was put in place. And what we talked about this board meeting that I'm sure we got an email or two, I think we did on, what are y'all doing? Y'all crazy? And and we tried, we said, hey, we've got an issue we've got to deal with today.
Right.
And, you know, and we put our concerns to staff and staff took over and said, hey, okay, we'll put this in place. We'll put this in place. We'll do this. We'll do that. And so by being proactive early from this board and staff, what we've done for the citizens is huge. And I think it ought to be touted and said, hey, look, we're, we've been through a pandemic and we're not out of it yet. But with what we've done, we've had savings. And we we have money. We're going to have to pay for these things in the next couple of years and have to get these things and replace these engines and parts and stuff like that. And we're going to have to do that and then maintenance on buildings and all that, but we're keeping up with our maintenance. And we're keeping up with everything, but the things that can that maybe we're going to do this year that can wait two years, we're going to put off and and we have. But I think it's important that the citizens know that what an outstanding job that y'all have done and staff has done. In order to get us through this year, which has been an extremely hard year on everybody. So thank you and.
And Mr. Chair, we appreciate it. I would tell you, Ms. Day and I and the departments, we have worked together. The departments have really pulled their weight and they have given when we've asked. And that's similar to my point of coming back. Ms. Day and I need to work on a recommendation to you to not refund everything that we've cut. But I think there are some things to her point, vehicles, projects, things that that were that are getting older and older and more expensive. We should come back to you with a list in the October timeframe to spend, not all and not most, but some of to refunding some of those things that were in this year's budget we took out. As well as some of the other pressing needs such as the space or the facilities master plan if the board wants to move forward with those kind of activities. So we will have a recommendation for you, hopefully in the next, I'm going with October timeframe.
Just if you'll just let staff know what, how much we appreciate.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Their hard work. And and I just thought that item needed definitely be highlighted because that was a joint effort by everyone. And and it's amazing what we were able to do in the county and staff was able to do is sort of holding things off and with y'all's leadership. And I just want to say hats off. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Starting with this fiscal year, tonight I'm going to present the information for July and August, the two months that we've had successfully closed so far this year. The information tonight is presented both on a cash basis and an accrual basis. The cash basis is exactly what it sounds like. It represents the cash that was received so far this year. The columns that represent the cash basis are titled actual, unaudited, and prior year actual. So that's the 22.5 and the 24.6. The accrual basis reflects the amounts after adjustments that we've made to move revenue collected in July and August that were really for May and June. And so that is represented in the columns actual after accruals, unaudited, and prior year actual after accruals. The 5.2 and the 6.3. So I know we've discussed this in the past, but as you can see, really, the majority of the revenue we've received this year is for last year. And that's been moved and adjusted accordingly. It's part of the year in surplus numbers that I shared with you earlier as well. Also, rather than showing a budget actual comparison, I thought that the presentation would actually be more meaningful if I presented actual collections this year compared to last year. However, from a budget perspective, as you know, we adopted a budget that was about a 10% reduction from where we were in 20. Currently, year to date, we're about 9% down overall. So we are tracking in line with that 10%. The biggest contributors to the variances are in the general property taxes and the other local tax categories. For general property taxes, as you can see, it's down about half a million dollars. That's due to several reasons. The penalty on the June 5 bill was extended to August 5, which may have resulted in some people delaying their payments. Further, the due date for the real estate and the personal property tax supplemental bills, which is due August 5, was extended to August 14. Those bills are for real estate, property supplements, and personal property vehicles acquired through June. For which the county didn't have completed data until the end of June. Also included in this billing is the first half of the business, personal property, and machinery and tools bills. That covers the period January through June. And again, given the timing of when the businesses file their personal property taxes, which is May 1, those related bills are not due until August 5 as well. Again, that was extended to August 14. There was also a $243,000 refund to a taxpayer. For disputes on their 2017, 18, and 19 property taxes that was posted in July. So of that 526,243 was related to one refund.
Was that something that I assume you worked with the the treasurer's office on that?
The commissioner of revenue and the treasurer work with the taxpayer.
Just have to pay what? We we don't really have any role in that, I guess.
The state, the state does a review and they ultimately determine whether or not a refund is due.
Okay, thank you.
We'll take a deeper look into the other local taxes since this is the category with the tourism related taxes. Again, I wanted to mention the state remits the local sales taxes to localities two months in arrears. So therefore July's collection was for May and August's collection was for June. Consequently, for fiscal year 21, that's why zero is shown. From a cash perspective, the decrease was down about 20%, which is an improvement. From the 39% reduction that we were seeing the last few months of fiscal year 20. We budgeted a 38% reduction in this revenue source. So the actuals are much better than what the budget reflects. For the historic triangle, additional 1%, that one is also paid to localities by the state two months behind. We're down from a cash perspective about 14%. And again, in that category, we budgeted about a 39% reduction. So that one is also trending better than budget. The lodging and meals taxes are paid by businesses to James City County. That one is one month in arrears. July's collections would be for June and August collections would be for July. From a cash perspective, lodging tax is down about 58% compared to last year. Again, that's a slow improvement over what we saw the last three months of fiscal year 20, where we were trending closer to 74% reduction. We budgeted a reduction of 49%, so we're hoping that trend does improve. Also, from a cash flow perspective, meals tax is down about 53%, which again has improved since the last update where we saw an 84% reduction. The budget in that category only reflects a 10% decline. So this one has a ways to go and it is a pretty significant revenue source. What's interesting in this category is that the sales taxes aren't down nearly as much as we had projected. But the meals tax is down considerably more. The meals tax probably took a harder hit with the phase three restrictions and also again, when the Hampton Roads restrictions were extended here recently. It also tells us that the lack of tourists is significantly impacting us, that the tourists tourists are eating out. And of course, Busch Gardens is also a big contributor to our meals tax. Overall, between those two local taxes and meals tax, big swings in budget, but the, as you can see, the dollar amounts they bring in is very similar. So our hope is if the trend were to continue, one will offset the other and we'll still come in pretty close to what we've budgeted. Obviously, we hope they both get better. Okay, over on the expenditure side, also July through August. The actual columns include our actual expenditures, but also any outstanding purchase orders that we have. The majority of the budget again does reflect the transfer to the school division. That's about 54% of our total budget. Payroll is next at about 27%. And then transfers for capital and debt service. So that leaves very little for everything else. I did want to mention our debt service payments only happen about twice a year. So this can skew our percentages when we do this type of comparison. We typically pay our debt service in January in the May and June timeframe. All the expenses, if all the expenses came in evenly evenly, which they don't. The budget would be about 16.67 of the budget utilized so far. That's about two out of 12 months, July and August. As you can see, court services is above that percentage and that's because of equipment maintenance that they have to pay in full at the beginning of the year. FMS finance is also above our percentage. That's primarily due to our insurance premiums through our carrier, which is VACOR. They also require payment in full in July. IT is above their percentage. Again, this has to do with equipment maintenance and software contracts that they have to pay in full at the beginning of the year. Community development is also above trend. That's because of the comp study updates that they've been doing. Most of that work is nearing completion and so that budget percentage is up right now as well. And we make the majority of our payments to our outside agencies in July as well. So our transfers and our contributions to outside agencies is also going to be above trend. I did want to mention again, just due to the uncertainty with COVID, we continue to operate under the same restrictions that have been in place since March. So again, if we were looking at about two out of 12 months, we would expect about 16 to 17% of our budget being spent. And we're trending below that at about 15%. Dollar wise, it's about a $3 million difference. That's it for me tonight. I would anticipate providing a summary similar to this each month for the foreseeable future. At least until things become more stable or you tell me otherwise. I would like to incorporate some some graphs and charts also to provide some more meaningful information to you.
I have a follow up.
Absolutely.
For probably Mr. Stevens because regarding Busch Gardens, I take it hallow screams completely off the table. They're not doing anything even with the thousand. Do you know or?
You know, I did talk with Kevin Limpke and he indicated, and this is several weeks ago, that they wouldn't be doing the hallow scream just from the cost of upfinning and hiring and all those kinds of things. They did hope to extend sort of what they're doing now over these taste of and different events through the fall. So my hope is that through October and into November, they will continue to operate as they are. They certainly would like for their attendance numbers to be up as opposed to not having the thousand patron cap to get it closer to that five to 7,000. And we are working with our legislators to bring them to the park along with some of you as we get that date. Put in place that maybe we can bring attention back to it and show how safe it is. And I will tell you, I've been one times with Mr. Limpke walking through and the other time on my own, just to sort of see how it feels. And as a patron, it is phenomenal because there are no lines and no waits. I mean, it's, it feels almost empty even with close to 1,000 people in it. Certainly with, and again, he's operating a third to a half of the park depending and not all the rides, but some. I really believe the five to seven patron limit in that park would feel very similar if you open the whole park. And our hope will be to sort of convince those that make the decisions and are worried about health, as are we, that they can operate the park in a safe manner. So my hope is those numbers will increase for him, that they're allowed to bring in more people. But I don't anticipate they'll be back to 20 or 30,000. And I don't anticipate they'll have the big hallow scream or Christmas town that they've done. And I don't know much about the December events, but my hope is they'll continue some operation as long as they're able to bring people in.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one one comment for any of the board. Is there anything else you'd want to have in the financial reports? As Ms. Day indicated, she's going to add some graphs and charts so you can sort of see some trend lines. This will change on a monthly basis as revenues coming in. If you look at it or think about it later and there are pieces that are missing that you'd like to have, we'll be happy to try to incorporate that. It's meant to be as readily a current tool for you as it is, even though revenues lag to keep you up to date with where we are in terms of financial trends. So.
I would offer that I think maybe some trend lines or graphs or whatever like that would be helpful, especially when. If you see in like one picture, what were the assumptions we made for the for the budget and how are we on track or and where are we on track? You know, overall, or are we off one way or off the other? And what's the magnitude? So I think that's what we're looking to see to get some feedback on a month to month basis as to how close we were and and whether adjustments will be needed and if so, when.
Lane, one one item I did want to mention, getting back to Mr. Hippel's point about COVID related expenditures. Our CARES Act funding does end on December 30 of this calendar year. Our current budget does not include any funding for ongoing COVID-19 related expenditures. So that might be something just to consider as well as we begin talking about surpluses and that type of thing.
Point because we'll have to cover that that expense in house with a loss of others as we go along. So that's going to be a compounded issue in our budget. Yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Next, we have the authorization for the reclassification of accounts payable specialist position and related budget appropriation. Ms. Day.
Yes, thank you. The Financial Management Services Department is currently in the process of replacing our financial software system. The success of that project is vital as our financial software is utilized by every county department as well as all of our fiscal agencies, in which there are seven. Among other things, it's the primary system that we utilize for our purchasing needs and also our budgetary control. Included in the capital budget for this project was funding to hire temporary help to assist with our daily responsibilities. Allowing the core staff to focus on successfully implementing the new system. To date, that additional work has been fully absorbed by our existing staff. At this stage of the project, it's become apparent that additional resources are necessary. it's become apparent that additional resources are necessary to successfully implement the new system while continuing to process vendor invoices for the county and its fiscal agents. The previous plan to meet those needs through backfilling positions has become unfeasible primarily due to COVID-related concerns. Rather, staff has determined the best course of action is to reclassify the part-time accounts payable specialists in the accounting division to full-time. The cost of the reclassification for fiscal year 21 is estimated at $16,800. An approval to reclassify the position to full-time requires adoption of a resolution creating the position, transferring the funding from the Capital Project Fund to the General Fund, and appropriating those funds in the General Fund. Staff recommends adoption of the attached resolution.
One question. When, and I know that COVID has added to this and everything we're trying to do, when that settles down, will you be able to utilize that employee as we move forward?
Absolutely. This upgrade in position was included in the fiscal year 21 budget, and it was approved by HR as well as county administration. But of course, with the budget reductions and with the current COVID environment, the funding for that was removed. We currently only have one full-time accounts payable person. She processes the invoices not only for every county apartment, but JCSA, the EDA, WADA, Old Town, the jail, and juvenile detention. We are blessed to have her. She comes to us with 40 years of experience. However, we are at risk, in my opinion, with only having one person do all of that. We recently had a part-time position approved, and she has been helpful. She also used to work for the county, and so she's very efficient. That is the position that we are looking to upgrade now.
Thank you. Questions?
And I'll move it.
Stevens?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, number six. Rec Connect Program modification at Williamsburg James City County School Division COVID-19 Childcare Program.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce two of our staff members that have been influential in putting this program together. As you know, the last time I was here, we had some discussion about it. We'd done some surveys from both school side and the county staff that need to have a full-day program for the first nine weeks of school since it was going to be virtual. So Arlena Fontleroy is our recreation administrator, and April Melton oversees all of our before-and-after-school program, which is now a full-day program this year. So those two, working with our FMS staff and school staff, developed the program. I was on vacation most of the time. I was surprised to see my name on here when I got back. But anyway, they did the yeoman's work on this program, so I need to give them kudos. Cheryl from FMS and Sharon and those two in school staff put the program together. It's been in existence now for about three weeks. So we're back here to get this resolution approved, appropriating some of the CARES money to offset the cost for that. Just to give you, the program was set on four school sites for community use and one for the school staff. We've only opened three sites. That's all the need that's there. We registered 60 youth at each site. We're averaging about 35 to 45 per day, per week at the community site. School site is averaging about 6 to 10 to theirs. One of the things the schools decided to do was to allow the teachers to bring their children to school during the day so that, we think, reduced it because originally their survey showed about 250 teachers needing it. So in some ways, I think, you know, we've been, much less, as I said to you all early on, we don't know what the demand is going to, what the actual is going to be. A lot of people respond to surveys. They'll put their, they'll try to get enrolled at this program and that program so everybody was working. So that's where we are today. We don't envision that we'll need all of this money based on what the need now is. We projected the community sites, we will cover our direct cost or within a few thousand dollars at the $110 a week fee of our direct costs, staffing and operationally. The school site probably will not at the numbers that they're generating because they're charging a lower rate, so they won't. But they have a lot of their staff working there too. So here before you to get the resolution adopted, to use the CARES money to offset this program. And any questions? I'll be glad. And if I can't answer, I know somebody out here can answer it. If you get too deep in it.
The question I had was, or one, was the, so as you're saying that teachers are bringing their children in, they're required to be at school two days a week.
And it's my understanding that they were allowed to bring their children with them, their children with them to the school site.
And so then the six or 10 maybe other school staff kids or maybe some teachers got it.
I don't know if they're teachers or whatever.
Right. And then how much leeway? I mean, are we in communication with the schools to say, give us a heads up when you're getting ready to change phases? And how are we dealing with all of that?
Arlena's actually had two meetings already on that. And so they are preparing for these scenarios.
Okay.
I think some of the, and Arlena, you can come on over here or correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, you know, when the school system makes a decision on that, you know, we'll be prepared to adjust. One of the things that surfaced is if we are not allowed to be in the school when they're doing the two or three days, that is definitely going to impact what we can offer. And so I think that's a critical decision, but.
Because I'm assuming they're going to start with, I think I saw some of their plan was kids would be two, some kids would be in two, some other kids. So then what will you do with that, those kids that are needed?
Yeah, so what the school is proposing to do on Path 2 is to bring back grades K through 3. And so what will happen there is your grades 4 through 5 will still need full-day care. K through 3 will come in person two days, and then they will need full-day care on three days. So it's a pretty complicated model. And we are in the background now trying to figure out which way we will be able to offer the services. But the two main assessment pieces is the ability to use the schools and coexist at the same time. And we do think some transportation may need to be in place in terms of still possibly operating the three full-day sites and bringing kids in on their before-and-after-school days and out on their before-and-after-school days. So we're trying to figure out what model's going to work best, but it's certainly a complicated model right now.
Thank you. And then just one follow-up. Have you been able to keep your staff safe and the students in your care safe?
Yes, we have. We have a lot of procedures that we've had to create and put in place. And we haven't with the children. We haven't had any risk of, well, there's always a risk of COVID, but we haven't had any COVID cases with the children. Most people will think, you know, little people with masks on, that that's the largest challenge. And it is still a challenge, but the children have done amazingly well. If you come out to see any of the site locations, that was the first thing, you know, that I saw. And then we had to do site layouts that were different and set them up in a social distancing style, you know, six feet apart. Obviously, they're little people, so when they get a chance to move, they sometimes don't know six feet apart. So we do little signals like, you know, two arms lengths apart and things like that to try to keep the children safe. And we've done modifications, you know, temperature screenings. We've changed how we serve snack. We do mostly prepackaged. We're not doing any open airborne type of snack. There's lots of procedures that we put in place.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'll move the resolution if there's no questions.
Okay, no questions? Mr. Stevens, we have a motion. Please call or roll.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler? Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we have number seven, communications overview. Ms. Leteraro, you waited all evening for this.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, thank you for inviting me this evening to provide an overview of the county's communications division. Communications team is made up of three employees, including myself, our PIO, Renee Dahlman, and our graphic designer, Andrea Perkins. We also get some additional staff support from Teresa Fellows, deputy clerk for the Board of Supervisors when our schedule permits. These days, people have so many different ways that they consume information, and technology is giving us more options than ever before to get our message out to the community. So our goal is to try to put out that information in a variety of ways so that people can find information about James City County in whatever way that they prefer. So whether that's by social media, in an audible format, by video, face-to-face, et cetera. One of our primary information functions is the publication of news flashes, also known as press releases. We produce an average of 39 news flashes per month, and that's up slightly in 2020 presumably because of the COVID-19 pandemic. We also assist with media inquiries, which are often generated from those news flashes. Citizens can subscribe to receive these updates by email, and they're archived on the county's website, jamescitycountyva.gov. Perhaps one of our best-known public information tools is social media. We have over 12,000 followers on Facebook and 5,000, over 5,000 on Twitter. We are @JamesCityCounty on both sites. Typically, we post several times per day promoting county events, sharing news from the county or our partner organizations like WJCC Schools, and sharing helpful reminders with the public such as deadlines for the upcoming election. All of our public, our social media posts for county that are for county-related content always point back to the county's website, which is our number-one source of information for James City County. I want to take a moment to explain a little bit about social media algorithms. Social media platforms have algorithms that determine the content that you see on your timeline. So that means that you might follow James City County on Facebook or Twitter, for example, but you might miss some of the content that we post, even though you're a follower of ours. Likewise, if we post something that turns out to be super popular, it might show up on your timeline even if you're not a follower of James City County. We don't have any control over those calculations about who receives what information at what time. So because that's beyond our control, that's why we try to make sure that our posts point back to the website. And again, that's our number one. We do have control over our website, and that's our number-one source for information and our best way to tell our story to the public. One of our newer tools for sharing information is our podcast, This Week in James City County, which is hosted by our Public Information Officer, Renee Dahlman. The podcast allows us to do a deeper dive into topics such as hurricane preparedness. And when our county administrator is our guest, it's a great opportunity for listeners to get a recap of the latest developments happening in our community. The podcast currently has 127 episodes with 18,000 downloads, which is double the amount from last year. Communications works in partnership with our county's Emergency Management Office and the Virginia Department of Emergency Management to coordinate communications during severe weather events and other emergencies. We have an extended PIO team that helps us monitor local media, manage rumor control, get updates from county, from community partners, and more. We post updates to the county's website, social media through JCC Alert and other outlets. Accompanying almost all of our communication efforts is graphic design. Every news flash, social media post, flyer, and advertisement must include a graphic element. In addition, we have publications like the county's budget, county signage, business cards, letterhead, et cetera. And graphic design is also responsible for brand management in the county, ensuring that all of our public communications are both eye-catching and consistent with our branding standards. One of the most important ways that we share information with the public is through our community meetings, such as our Community Conversation Series and our Budget Community Meetings. Of course, COVID-19 has had a tremendous impact on our community engagement efforts, which has required some creative adjustments, which I'll discuss more in a moment. Although it's not visible to the public, another important thing that communications does is our internal communications. Making sure that we're sharing information within our organization is just as important as sharing information with the public. A few examples of our internal communications include the monthly employee newsletter, emergency announcements sent out to county employees, and employee news, excuse me, employee surveys. Most of what we do in communications is in support of other departments. So here are some examples that you can see, including a project for Keep James City County Beautiful and a job recruitment banner for Human Resources. Typically, if a department is looking to launch a new program or a public information campaign, they come to us to discuss strategies for getting the word out. So we can then help them develop the messaging, establish a timeline, identify the best ways to reach their desired audience, and get their input for the visual design. We then help them to promote the information and share it through our various channels, such as news flashes, social media, email blasts, and community meetings. So here you can see an example of the postcard campaign we recently completed in partnership with the Office for Economic Development to promote the Virginia 30-Day Fund and an advertisement for the Engage 2045 Comprehensive Plan Update that we did in partnership with Community Development. As I mentioned, the COVID-19 pandemic has seriously altered the way that we have been working this year. At the beginning of the pandemic, we worked really hard to put together signage for county buildings, such as special instructions for social distancing and hand-cleaning reminders. We also set up six distribution points throughout the county with printed packets of information, including community resources, FAQs, citizens' guides, and facts about COVID-19 for those who did not have internet access. We also published daily news flashes in English and in Spanish and recorded a daily message on the Emergency Information Hotline with COVID updates. We produced signs for county facilities with information about the initial closure and the later reopening. And we supported the video team and other departments with the transition to virtual community meetings and Facebook Live events. Our COVID-19 webpage remains active. It includes an archive of the press releases, FAQs, and important links to places like the Virginia Department of Health. We continue to update the content on this page regularly. Finally, I hope you all had a chance to see some of those Facebook posts that we did from earlier this year. Our PIO, Renee Dahlman, recognized that this was a very difficult time for everyone at the beginning of the pandemic. It was a pretty scary and stressful time, still is in a lot of ways. But she started the series of encouraging morning messages that were accompanied by this really beautiful graphic that our graphic designer, Andrea Perkins, created. It was a welcome change in tone, but it still included that really important public messaging about health updates related to COVID. And it was just really well-received by our citizens. We have since stopped the good morning messages, but we continue to update the public through our various channels of communication. To the extent that we can make plans during these uncertain times, we're taking a two-track approach to communications this fiscal year. Option A outlines some of the things, well, a strategy that we will do if things continue under the current set of restrictions due to COVID-19. So in that case, we expect to continue with regular emergency communications, sharing updates from the Virginia Department of Health, for example. We will continue to explore new alternatives for engaging with the community, such as virtual events. Finally, we'll continue to provide support to other departments as they also will be making adjustments to their programs and services. Option B outlines a plan for communications if some of the current COVID restrictions are lifted. Our team has discussed ideas like introducing Instagram and evolving the look of county branding by updating existing items, such as our PowerPoint templates and other projects. When conditions allow, we would also like to explore some new ideas for community engagement, including piloting a program of neighborhood walking groups where we can do some face-to-face relationship building with the goal of connecting with those community members who don't normally engage with our current channels of communication. Most likely, we'll end up doing a combination of these two tracts, an option C, if you will, but time will tell. As I mentioned in the beginning, communications works to push out information from the county in a variety of ways so that people can stay informed through their preferred sources. Our website remains our primary tool for sharing information with the public, and through it, citizens can view and subscribe to news flashes, listen to the podcast, find links to our social media, and find information on individual departments and services. They can also stream JCTV Live or watch videos on demand. We have a YouTube page as well, which includes video from some of our recent virtual community meetings, among other things. I should mention that the county's video team is actually located within the I should mention that the county's video team is actually located within the Information Resource Management Department, which is separate from communications, which is located under the County Administration Department. However, we work in partnership with the video team constantly on projects such as the video series that you all recorded at the very beginning of the pandemic, the messages that you made for citizens, and other content. I would encourage everyone to sign up for emergency communications via JCC Alert since we are currently in the peak of hurricane season. Our COVID information is available online or through the hotline, and citizens can always email me directly at letara.rouse@jamescitycountyva.gov. I also want to plug an upcoming episode of This Week in James City County, which will stream live on Facebook. It's our first live version of the podcast. It will be on Facebook, YouTube, JCTV, and on our website at 4:00 PM on October 1st. Our special guest will be JCC Director of Elections and General Registrar, Diana Mormon, who will be talking all things election. You can visit our website for more information or call 757-253-6605 to submit your questions. That concludes my overview. Do you all have any questions, advice, or requests for the communications team?
I was curious about your thoughts on the website. I find it sometimes difficult to...
No, thank you. Yeah, and sometimes on mobile, it's difficult, and so... We are due for a website upgrade. That is not, that is going to be managed by the Information Resource Management Department, but communications and administration will be involved in that process, so we will be able to help offer our advice in terms of the organization of content.
No, I loved your idea about the walking, the neighbors knowing that right now is not the time to do that, but moving ahead in the future. I think that's, that's a really neat idea. Yes.
And I just want to congratulate you all. You're, the communications department's doing a great job in getting a very positive message about the county out and letting people learn information in an entertaining way and a very engaging way, so, good job.
Thank you also for getting the COVID info up when all this, I think it was very resourceful, and I think the citizens, well, I used it myself, but I know the citizens really appreciated that effort as well. It made it very quick and easy to get information.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us down to board requests and directives. Want to start at the far end?
Sure. It's nice to be back.
Nice to have you back.
Tucked in my little corner. I'd just like to take a minute to thank Diana Mormon, our registrar, for the outstanding job she's doing. She is really going above and beyond to make sure everything is running efficiently. She's very dedicated. She does an amazing job. And I would just like to just offer the thought that we, I think we need to take a look at how we can better help her with staff and funding some of the needs that she has over there. I think it's very important that she has, we can make her job a little easier, if you will. Also, I just, I'd just like to take a moment to say that the nation this week lost a trailblazing leader, Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, helped pave the way for women, such as Ms. Larson and myself, to be able to pursue and participate and lead. And agree or not with policies, at the end of the day, we're all people, and we all have families, and I know her family is in mourning. So I'd just like to personally offer my condolences to her family at this difficult time. Speaking of families, just on a little private note, I'd like to wish my daughter a very happy milestone birthday. I won't tell you which one, because she will cream me when I get back, but I just want to tell her how proud I am of her, the job she's doing with her family and pursuing a new career and back in school, and happy birthday. That's it.
I just, welcome back, Ms. Sadler.
Thank you.
And second, your references to Justice Ginsburg and your references to the registrar, and I hope that we can provide additional help to make that job more easy, because it's important for all of our citizens to have the opportunity to vote.
Thank you. I would also like to follow up on your words about Justice Ginsburg and say that she saw real value in the role that women play in economic, in the economic of the world, really, and made sure that there were equal things, such as signing mortgages and getting credit in their name, and, which was, it's just nice that somebody showed the value in women and followed through with that. So thank you for that. I also want to follow up. I had an opportunity to go and tour. I've gone quite often. We have to turn in paperwork to Ms. Mormon's office, but hadn't been there in a while and got a tour last week, and we do seem to have a little bit of a crunch problem there. She's, she's using every inch of space that she has. And, you know, she is in a very unique position in that we don't, we're not her, we don't oversee her. She's overseen by a board. You do work with her, but her pay is determined by the Commonwealth, but it is very, it does not equal the job that is done, maybe in some communities, but not in this one, and not as they've continued to put more responsibility on that position. And so I do think that in our legislative agenda, this does need to be one of the topics, because, you know, there was a lot of legislation that went through this year about voting. And again, as I stated earlier, anything we can do to give more access to voting, I think is extremely important. But when that becomes cumbersome on a locality to fulfill that, that's where I have the problem. And, you know, I specifically asked Ms. Mormon, for instance, there was a, there's apparently a card that went out from the Department of Motor Vehicles last week to every citizen that holds a driver's license that is not registered to vote. Well, that is, that's wonderful. It's a reminder to, that is not wonderful at the end of September, right before an election, when you've now added early voting, and, you know, that would have been great in June. Well, I don't know if she'd say it would have been great, but, you know, the more leeway time that you, that you give is, but because her office was already, as were the Director of Elections across the Commonwealth, they were dealing with a presidential primary this year. That limited their ability to go to the General Assembly and gather and talk, and so a lot of things went through without a whole lot of input and, you know, and how they were going to be paid for, and what was our responsibility as a locality. Now, we're using this voter center, which we've approved, which I think is a good thing, but going back to what I also said earlier, we've cut off nonprofits now from meeting. You know, so much was done, and it wasn't really giving us a chance to plan. So I do think it's something that we do need to devote, really talk about how we're going to deal with in the future, and also do what we can to get some compensation, you know, not just looking to the locality, but looking to the Commonwealth to help us in that, you know, it's easy, I think, we've talked about it before, we have a, you know, we have constitutional officers that are, their, their money is determined by the state, but we, I think we provide a little bit of supplement to some, not all. So I know it gets very complicated, and how do you do that without doing this? But when you've got somebody that, at certain times of the year, is working seven days a week, 15 to 16 hours a day, making, similar to what we make, $1.83 an hour, well, yeah, sorry.
You get a raise.
You know, I think we need to talk about it, and not just, if we're not able to do anything, then look to our General Assembly to help us do something. And they need to really take a look at it, because I don't think they have in many, many years. And I don't, there may be some counties, and I know there are, that are not growing like ours, like the James City County is. So, you know, sure, they can keep that. It's a part-time job. It is not a part-time job here. And as more and more responsibility and more and more early voting falls on that position, it's something we really need to discuss. So, thank you. Oh, and just to follow up, thank you very much for the tour of Ambler House. I won't get it, I've taken up too much time today, and that would take too long, but I do want to say thank you to everyone that so, has stepped in to maintain. But we do need to have a serious discussion about that house, and also for the information and tour of the marina, and really a deep dive. I just really appreciate your approach to these matters, and you're also, your ability, your, your knowledge of that there's a lot of different things that need our attention, and how do we make it all work, which we probably cannot, but, but these are two properties that we've had, from my understanding, since 2007, that desperately need some, you know, they need some decisions made, or they need some money spent, because they're deteriorating rapidly. So, thank you for that, you and Mr. Carnifex.
I agree with all three of you on every issue that y'all, y'all discussed. And, and I definitely agree that that new building is going to be great when we have all the needs met. So I'm with you all the way all night.
Right.
How are you going to fit the marina in that building? I slide that in. As wet as it has been, we get that in.
Marina's right next door to the basement swimming.
Cox, do we know anything further? I know they're moving, but...
And our county attorney has been back and forth with Cox on an agreement, and I think they had, we had 12 projects, a few of them got merged together, so none of the projects dropped out. There were two of them that were rather large, and I think they were concerned with timeframe, so we were developing a separate agreement, but I believe the other ones will move forward. Not quick enough for those residents that don't have service today, particularly those with kids in school, but we still feel like it's on a very good track to move that forward. And so I hope to have a better update once we have that contract signed, but we're really close.
And it's, and, you know, and the hotspots work one minute, they work good the next. Ben, I came in and I was getting ready to leave, and Ben said, "43, Dad." And I said, "43 what?" He said, "I've been knocked off 43 times since," and he had one more class to go through when I left this afternoon. And I said, "Well, at least you're learning how to get back on quicker." Yeah, but that's tough when you're right in the middle of something, then you've got to start all over and, or not all over, but try to catch up to what you've already missed. So it's, we'll be glad to see some, some definitely communications across county. And another thing, I was just thinking about when we were talking with, with communications and everything else, what we probably may want to do is put somebody in a charge of, since as COVID started, what have we done, and what have we put in place, and what did we do to get to this point, and what are we looking to get through this? So that if any board ends up with something similar to this, they can take the COVID out of it and maybe replace it with something else.
Have to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, and, and they can say, this is what they did back at that time to do this, and, you know, it might be something we'll be able to use down the road, it may not, but I was just thinking about as we were talking, that it'd be a good thing to try to put something in place that, that may help another board or county administrator, whoever's sitting in our seats down the road when they run into something, this, this is what they did. We can take these pieces out and reapply it over here.
I think that's a good idea. And, you know, a lot of times we have those after-action reports when events end. This one has been so long, I'm sure our emergency planners have that on their list, but maybe a mid-action report so that we can have better memory of the last six months. And Chief Ash and Sarah Rue may be ahead of us on that, but I will certainly put that on their list, because I think that is, will be very helpful to a future group.
And then we, yeah, and we'll file it away, and, and, you know, and where we're finished, how we ended, and how we came out of it, and maybe some, what would we have done different if we had known everything we could have known at the very beginning, which is always hindsight's 20/20. Thanks, Sarah.
Let me see, I followed Ms. Larson and went over and actually did a tour, I think, about an hour after you were there, over at the voter registrar's office, and it's obviously very clear that with what they're being asked to do, the space is not adequate. And so I think that's one of the places that we have to guard. We're going to learn some lessons from this experience this fall, and I think we need to keep very close tabs on what's going on and incorporate that into our plans very early to accommodate next year. And I will say that she told me that we have now surpassed, I think, 60, 60,000 registered voters in the county. I believe it was about 12,500 that they were sending absentee ballots out to last Friday. And my understanding is that the first two days, last Friday and Monday, we had over 700 in-person early voters. So those are some pretty impressive numbers. I haven't seen the numbers yet for today, but that, that represents a lot of work, a lot of work on their part, and I've been very, very happy with the work they've done on behalf of citizens in James. A little bit better by them if we can. I will say that I did not realize we'd gotten a pay raise. I didn't realize I was up to $1.83 an hour.
All right, sorry, it's probably more like $1.52, but I stretched it.
I thought it was 25 cents an hour. One thing I do want to follow up on, and that is, I've heard this from many, many people in the community, and sometimes I don't think our staff hears it enough. Our staff has been operating under very stressful conditions for quite an extended time period. That can lead to morale issues and all sorts of things. And I think it's very incumbent upon us as the board to remind them on behalf of the citizens that they serve what a superb job they have been doing for our citizens. Let the situation grind you down. So I would say to our, our folks in James City County, we appreciate you, love you, and...
Mr. Chairman, were you going to mention anything about the other drop-off sites?
Oh, yeah, I, well, we all got an email, I believe, earlier from, from Diana, and as was mentioned, you know, this is a decision that is essentially hers and the, and the electoral boards. And the compromise that she came up with was that they weren't able, weren't able to do the additional locations for the same length of time. But right now, I think she sent one to us today that indicated that about the 19th of October through the end of the cycle, Monday through Friday, that they would be operating at Abram Frank and the library, and that was contingent upon getting approval from the library, I think. And I've asked Mr. Stevens to reach out to the library and to make sure that we can, whatever we need to do, try to make that happen from, that would give people an opportunity for upper and lower end of the county that wanted to do an in-person drop-off of a mail-in ballot that didn't have the ability to get necessarily all the way to the middle of the county, at least another opportunity to do it.
Maybe we should also mention, too, that the first wave of ballots, mail ballots, just went out on Friday.
Friday.
And so they are asking, if you do go to in-person voting, but you indicate that you've already requested a mail-in ballot, that you, you will be given a provisional ballot, which will not be open until November 6th, that they can count to see whether your original mail ballot has come in. So they are asking people to wait a little bit to see if their ballot comes out in the first wave, or possibly even the second, before you go to the, to the voter center to vote.
And I think it's, we all ought to be telling folks that if they've asked for an absentee ballot, it's much simpler on our voter registrar if they vote the absentee ballot. If they have a concern about putting it in the mail, they have an alternative method of returning it. But either whether they put it, mail it back in, or take it to one of the drop boxes, it's easier on the process if you've requested the absentee ballot to actually vote the absentee ballot. And she also mentioned that if they went out last Friday, if you haven't gotten yours in about a week to 10 days, then to contact her.
Yeah, somebody, I did see today where you can, if the post office scans it correctly, you should be able to track your ballot.
Apparently, you can also go on the voter, I guess it's on the... Apparently, you can also go on the voter, I guess it's on the Department of Elections' website, and you can, with the barcode, if you have it, you can track the status of your ballot.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? No? With that, I will look for a motion to adjourn until 5:00 PM on October 13th, 2020, for a regular meeting.
Motion.
Okay. We'll give that one to Sue. Yeah, let Sue head up. All right. Mr. Stevens, please call the roll.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.